I need to do that two silent. Good things out there. I don't know what I thought about this, mind buzzed, I guess. But anyway, it's good to have everybody here. Thank you for the interest in the county government and all that. We're going to have our invocation by Supervisor Tatum and then the pledge to the leech by Supervisor Smith. So if you will, please go on us and stand, Mr. Tatum.
Again, it's good to see everyone here today. This bough for word of prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thanking you and praising you for all you do for us. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to be here today and conduct county business. Lord, we pray that you'll grant us wisdom in everything that we do, and we pray that we'll always strive to do your will. And Father, I pray that everything that's said and done in today's meetings will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' most holy and precious name, I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just turned that off. All right, I need to approve the agenda. Do any of the board members have any additions, amendments, or additions to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented, please.
Second.
Second, we got a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Sure there is none. So if there's no changes to the agenda, then it's approved as presented. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Keith Ludeman, if he'll come forward. He has a couple of presentations to make, so Deputy Chief, it's all yours, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I know you've got a busy agenda today, so I'll be brief. However, I am confident that you will agree that the time will be well spent to recognize two of Franklin County's bravest. Our public safety members, both volunteer and career, are out in the streets every day doing great things, sometimes going above and beyond the call of duty. Unfortunately, I think we fall short at times of recognizing their efforts, and I'm hoping to change that starting today. As I share with you the events that unfolded during the early morning hours of January 16th, 2024, I expect both firefighter Shively and firefighter Brown will tell you they were just doing their jobs. January 15th was a very busy day for career staff and volunteers across Franklin County. A winter storm blanketed our area with snow and ice. Like many other units, Medic Three had a very busy 24-hour shift. On that same shift in the early morning hours on January 16th, Medic Three was returning from Franklin County, returning to Franklin County after transporting a patient to Roanoke Memorial Hospital. At approximately 4:00 a.m., Medic Three with firefighter Shively, firefighter Brown, was traveling down the 220 corridor in the Clearbrook area of Roanoke County when they spotted what appeared to be flames coming out of a house. Medic Three turned around, located a house on fire, and notified the dispatch center. As they approached the residence, they accounted for the occupants, determined that both of them had escaped the flames and were outside. However, one male occupant re-entered the home in an attempt to extinguish the fire. Medic Three, recognizing this, promptly donned their personal protective equipment along with their breathing apparatus and entered the home in the search of the occupant. The occupant was located in a near-zero-visibility environment and was removed from the home thanks to the efforts of Medic Three. In addition, Medic Three then used their water can to extinguish and knock down the bulk of the fire until units from Roanoke County arrived to finish extinguishment. Allow me to share a message I received from the Roanoke County Station Seven shift commander. I want to tell you how much of an impact a couple of your employees made yesterday morning on January 16th. While returning from the hospital, after an EMS call, Brandon Brown and Garrett Shively noticed the fire in a home along the 220 corridor in Roanoke County. The gentlemen turned their medic unit around, responded to the home. Having the forethought not to block the driveway with the medic truck, they parked it out of the way and approached the home with their personal protective equipment on, along with their tools. The homeowners advised me that firefighter Brown and firefighter Shively first ensured everyone was out of the home, and then they entered the home to attack the fire with a water can. Upon our arrival, your men were exiting the structure and reported to me that they had found the, what they had found and the actions they had taken to include removing the occupant who had re-entered the home. Once they gave me a report, they also made themselves available for another assignment. I sent an investigation group in to see what the situation was, and was informed the fire had mostly been extinguished. While contained to the kitchen, the fire had been fairly extensive. I know that the actions of Brandon Brown and Garrett Shively made a huge difference in the outcome of this call. The actions and professionalism of these men were amazing and very appreciated. End of message. So members of the board, the actions of Medic Three C-shift represented Franklin County in the highest regards, risking their own safety, searching for and removing an occupant without the protection of a hose line or a backup crew. They did so without hesitation, so for this, and with the assistance of the chairman, I proudly present them a unit citation award which recognizes a functional unit that displayed superior execution of duties and performance at the scene of an emergency incident.
community every day, and I couldn't be prouder for these two young men as well as all the other crews that we have serve in Franklin County. We're very fortunate to have men and women just like this every day that go out to serve our community. Thank you, fellows.
I echo that. That's what I was wanting to say, that we are very fortunate to have the dedicated men and women that we have in our county that are doing a job because they care, because they care for the people and they care for the neighborhood that they live and work in. And we're very, very fortunate for these folks. Last month, the board recognized our county employees for their years of service. Each year, we recognize employees who reach their five years of service. Several employees have reached 10, 20, even 30 years of service to Franklin County. On a rare occasion, some employees have surpassed even 35 and 40 years of service. It's a long time, isn't it? Today, the board supervisors would like to recognize Shirley Reynolds. Shirley's here. Forty-five years of service.
Wow.
She's been serving you at the county library. Probably seen her there, got books, read stories to the kids. Forty-five years of service, and we want to take this time to present her with a resolution, and I've asked her to come up here to the front to be with us, and we got to run back there and get that resolution. But while she's gone, you got something to say? You got to, tell us a story. What is one of your most memorable moments? What was the library like when you started?
Well, very different. I will tell this one story. We had just started getting movies in the library, and a family came in, a little boy and a little girl with their mother, and they wanted a movie for a family. So I was showing them what we had, and I said, oh, well, here's, here's one with the Three Stooges, they're kind of funny. And the little boy looked at his mother and he said, what's a stooge?
That's a good story.
Resolution of service appreciation. Whereas Shirley Reynolds has served Franklin County Library with distinction since December 27th, 1978. Whereas Ms. Reynolds, through her 45 years of service, has had a wide variety of duties over the years. Shirley worked as a reference circulation librarian. As the library grew, she remained in that role but was joined by others at the main desk. Eventually, she took over the role of interlibrary lone bookmobile librarian and then became the cataloger. Whereas Ms. Reynolds has had a wide variety of duties over the years, she mastered each one through diligence and study. Whereas Ms. Reynolds' main duties dominated her time, she was always willing to help in other areas as the need arise. Ms. Reynolds, with her outstanding customer service, positive attitude, and professional optimism, continues to be a valuable and respected member of the library family. Whereas Ms. Reynolds' success has come with time, patience, hard work, and her ability to successfully accept the ever-challenging challenges in the library world. And whereas Ms. Reynolds has been a dependable and reliable employee who continues to be professional with all staff and exhibits a strong work ethic which is very much appreciated. Now, therefore it being resolved that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors hereby adopts this resolution of service appreciation to honor Shirley Reynolds for her 45 years of service, the board wants to express their gratitude and appreciation for her continued dedication over the years as she realizes this extraordinary milestone. Each member of the board wishes Shirley a very happy work anniversary and continued success in her career. She's not going nowhere, she's still here. She's just achieved 45 years.
Shirley, we need for you to get, let me get here, we need for you to get 45 more,
okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would remind the supervisors, a lot of times if you have any questions or comment, it can be taken care of through staff prior to the board meeting for any questions. Do we have anything on the consent agenda? What's your pleasure?
Pull item four, please.
Item four?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item one for just a quick comment.
Item one? Anyone else?
I'd like to make a comment on two, not to pull it, just to make a comment.
On number two? All right, before we, we're going to pull four, you got to comment for one, is that what you said?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to draw the board's attention to page six, and this concerns the solid waste management plan down here at the Business Park on 220 South. I just want to make sure the board caught this, they've only got 3.1 years remaining on that landfill they operate down there, and I find that a little disconcerting, and I also want to make staff aware of that, and we probably need to be figuring out what's going to happen when that thing gets filled up. And I'm going on the record as saying I do not want them putting that in our landfill, and that's my comment.
Okay, any more comments on that? All right, item two.
So I just wanted to mention, I'm a member of the National Wild Turkey Federation and also the local group, which is the Franklin County Longbeards, and they're the group that sponsors this Jakes event. And two things I wanted to mention, I volunteer at the Jakes event, and I'd just like everybody to know, it's an awesome event for the kids to go to, both your kids and grandkids. Last year, we had, I think it was 170 kids, and there are 30 different outdoor stations for kids that sometimes never have a chance in their life to go to an outdoor station. Like, I taught the archery station, and there was a shotgun station, and there's a tree climbing, and a fishing station, and it's just a wonderful all-day event for kids to go to, and I think a lot of people don't know about it, and it would be great for more people to know and for more people to come, and it's free, and it's just, it's an amazing event, so that's all I wanted to add.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Smith, on number four.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I think this is not the first year we've dealt with this. I remain, I'm sorry.
Everybody, you should have the outdoor occasion application that, at your, is that what you're referring to?
In part, yes, I want, okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 you're absolutely fine. I just want to make sure, I'm concerned that we are here at this late date, and according to the staff report, none of the requirements have been met, so does this, what we've had at our place, satisfy all of the outstanding issues with the commissioner and with public safety and EMS?
Can staff, Steve, can you address that?
Yes, I'll address that. Yes, so just this afternoon, we received the copies that you have in front of you where all the various agencies have signed off on the request.
Mr. Sandy, I would just say, I think we ought to encourage the applicant to get this done, perhaps the month before, in, you know, in February, or, but, you know, it doesn't give the board any latitude to ask for adjustments or provisions when they need to have their first event on March 31st.
Understood.
So it just kind of puts us in a situation that is not really desirable.
As you noted, this has been typical.
It is, it is.
And I will say that our previous clerk had reached out, I believe in December, to start this process, and so it's, it's a challenge every year. I think we generally get there, we get it in just in time, but it is problematic for the staff to get all those things together as well.
I'm just wondering if we should put a deadline on this for future reference, because it does put, I mean, staff has to drop everything else they're doing because this comes in very late, and that's, that's just very arduous on our staff, and I don't like it.
As a continuation on to what Ms. Smith's talking about, this is not the first time this is going on, and I, I agree, I think, I think we need to put some, some kind of a deadline on that, and we need to address that, we'll, in one of our work sessions, to revise that and set real with everybody that to address that and put some provisions in place, or do we have something there, Stephen, that's not being?
There is, if you look at the first page there, it's really 60 days prior to the event is, is when we're supposed to have all the completed, so.
And then it's, uh.
And the fee, the fee is doubled if, if it's late, and so I know the last couple of years, that's, there's been an additional fee, but that fee's $100, so it ends up being $200, if it's after that 60 days, but.
Maybe it needs to be more punitive, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe we need, let's, let's put that in a work session and talk about that and, and make it so that it's, you know, just $100, you know.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is my district, I did, I will make a point to have a discussion with Mr. Austin and see if we can help things along, but go ahead and we need to do what we need to do, that's fine, but I will talk to him.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that satisfy, so you still want to pull it, or just put it back?
No, I needed just to put some explanation out, and thank you.
That's good, thank you, no, thanks, that's, that's good there. I didn't know whether y'all had seen that application that was there in your packet that are on your desk there. Okay, with that being said, any more questions on the consent, so everything's still on there, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as, as presented.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. You do a roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Daniels, VDOT, good to see you today, sir.
He doesn't look very happy.
Members of the board, I have a quick report and then take any questions and comments like normal. So I'll start with, I guess the best news, Route 890, you probably all know, is open the bridge that we had to wash out around the abutment. We put a March 29 date on that, partly because we didn't really know what to expect and what we would find. We had a lot of debris piled up, if you remember, but we finished about 30 days ahead of schedule in part because of the hard work of our bridge crews, and when I say bridge crews, plural, that's on purpose, because we had folks from all over the district coming to work on it. We had, you know, folks coming from the Christiansburg area, even Shawsville and places like that that would drive to 890, Snow Creek, by as far east as you can go for them in Salem District to, to work on that. So that, that worked, went very well, and they got it done in, in good time. So, so it's open, we, we did some paving, we may have to come back and do a little bit of corrective pavement, but that's, remains to be seen, but it's open, which was the goal. Also, on Eton Road, we had that closed for a short period of time due to a pipe replacement, that's complete, and Hatchet Road, Route 629, we completed the same thing, a pipe replacement. We've still got to pave that area, but that's coming pretty soon. Moving down the list, Route 705, Cheston Hill, under activities for the next 60 days, we actually finished that between the report time and now. We had some shoulder work left to do, and they've got that complete. Cooper's Cove is underway, they, they finished the Jack and Boar, so the pipe is through under Cooper's Cove, they're setting in walls and doing some cleanup and what have you. 684 Boone's Mill, we're going to be closing that the first week of April, we coordinated with schools to work in spring break, we've got a pipe replacement that we've got to do, and it basically requires a closure, so that'll, that'll be a little bit of impact, but nothing to schools, which, which was a goal, and we will finish that week, we've got the whole week for the closure, but I think we'll be a little bit ahead of that. And we're doing some, some prep work will take place here soon, and the closure's the first week of April. And then Dudley Amos, Ms. Smith, we've been doing some work out there, we've got more work to do, and that's going to be surface treated, I think I've mentioned this before, in our calendar year '25, so not this season, but next season, it'll be a complete surface treatment overlay.
Thank you, Thomas.
Moving on to page two, I just wanted to note, we've got a safety study in, Supervisor Mitchell, you asked about that in that curve, we've got that under review in Salem now. I think a citizen had reached out to you on that. And I won't hit the project status because that, that really hadn't changed, we, we had to rebid some of those projects that we talked about last month, that's still underway. I don't have a target date for the advertisements yet, hopefully within the next two to three months, but we're not quite there yet, I'll, once we pin that down, and we'll get that in the report. And that's it for my report, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody got any questions for Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Question on the rescoping of the Smart Scale project at Lost Mountain Road, is there an expectation for timeframe for that, or does it need to be engineered? Do you have, can you just give us a brief update?
So yes and yes. The timeline, I don't have an updated ad date or construction date today, and I don't know that we know it. I know that we will work to stay on schedule, but we had spent quite a bit of time working with National Park Service, and that didn't, didn't work out too well, but, you know, it's, it's being designed right away, it's being acquired and constructed by the department, not Franklin County staff. So I know our guys will, they'll be working hard to keep a schedule, I don't have the actual ad date. I don't know that it's changed, Ms. Smith, but I'll, I'll find out and bring it back next month.
Can you remind?
Or we'll get you, we'll just get you an email.
Yeah, that's fine. Can you remind me of what the date was? Do you know off the top of your head? I can, I've got it in my files.
I don't, because see, we hadn't, we had not, so we hadn't purchased right away, so we are a year and a half, a couple of years out, so I don't know the planned ad date for it.
That's fine, Todd, no problem.
We'll, we'll get you an email with the update on it.
That's fine, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mitchell?
Hey, Todd, how you doing?
Doing well.
Looking right here in the land development permits, sign tag, self-secured.
Are you asking what it is, or I'm going to look for some help on that?
Is, um, do you see your Ashburn Tower Road, it's, there's some duplexes there on Ashburn Tower, it's the property that's, that is actually on, the entrance is going to be also on that road.
And secondly, I had to reach out to me, wanting to know what they would need to do with Ridge Acre Drive off D1 Road to be taken in as VDOT secondary.
So there's, there's a process for that, one of, one part of which is getting it to the standard that we would need to bring it in as a secondary system. We've had roads do that, you're going to have one come before you here soon on the agenda, Baytree, which is, is in Supervisor Smith's area, that we actually did in 2018, we just, we didn't get all the paperwork completed, so we're cleaning up, it's an old project, if you will, but you'll see that. We've also got, oh, shoot, I can't think of the name, Supervisor Mitchell, but we've got another one coming up for you that were recently brought into the secondary system, or are going to, under revenue sharing. So I say all that just to tell you that there's, there's a process to it. The biggest problem that we run into typically is the part about getting the road brought up to the standard we need to bring it into the system. I don't know the condition of the road specifically, but both of our counties have many private roads that are in disrepair, maybe they're gravel, maybe they're narrow, they may have a, a, a large drainage pipe that's starting to fail, and those things cost money. So the typical way to get it up to standard is the, the county does a cost share, revenue sharing with VDOT. That's an application process, and it's not immediate, you don't ask for it today, and we do it this season. It's, it's a once every two-year application, so it, like with us, takes time, with everything takes time. But the struggle we see is the, the county requires the citizens, the homeowners, the POA, if there is one, to fund the county's share, which is usually 50% of the cost, and that can get quite expensive to do, depending upon the condition of the road. The ones we've typically done, Goldfinch was the one I was thinking of, Goldfinch went through the revenue sharing process, it's, it's in Ms. Smith's district, a lot of those are easy. So we may have to cut a little bit of brush, we may have to pull a ditch just to reshape a ditch line, and then put a surface treatment coat on it. So we're literally talking $30,000, $40,000, max. These are short roads typically, cul-de-sac, maybe an orphaned street and a subdivision, so minimal work is what I'm trying to say here. Some of the other roads in the county that we've, we've been asked about have got a laundry list of deficiencies, and then you start getting into the hundreds of thousands of dollars really quickly, and that becomes really unattainable for, you, it's hard to expect the landowners to start funding literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, if a project's $500,000, they've got to come up with $250,000. It's pretty tough. So we'll, we'll make a, give me the road name again, just, I try not to forget it. Ridge Acre, yeah, and we may have looked at it before, I don't know.
I'm not sure either, or I can meet somebody out there and talk about it too, if you want to.
Please, Cooper, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll circle back with, with Ms. Cooper, and yeah, be glad if you want to come out there and look, meet and talk. If, if they've got a point of contact, if they had a homeowner association, that's be great, but many times we find they don't, so if they've got that, that point person, you know, we meet with them a lot of times and walk through it, and. and give them some idea what we're looking for. And we will even come up with a really, really high-level estimate. So now, keep in mind, high level. We don't do a survey. We're just kind of eyeballing everything. We start to make some assumptions on the typical section, what's there, the road, so that we can determine what do we need to do? And then we start putting some numbers on that. And we give that to county staff, and we give it to the homeowners, and they typically meet, talk about it, if they can do it. County actually does the application for them, and then we move forward. But we just have to get out there and look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, one question I would ask of those, of your constituents as to whether there's any bond. Is the county holding a bond on any part of the road?
Good point.
The private road? And that could help offset the costs, you know, once the county, under hard circumstances, could release that bond.
Yeah, so let me add on to that just a touch, and I should have said this upfront. To be eligible for the revenue sharing, the road has to be have been in use for 20 years or more. We've got some right now that we're working on that there was a bond on it, and the residents are using that money, potentially, potentially using it. I don't know if that's settled yet or not, to get the work done, to bring it up to standard, to get it into the system. So there's multiple ways. I'm thinking Ridge Acre's been around for a while. I don't know if anybody knows that, but if it's been around for more than 20 years, it's eligible for revenue sharing. And then there may or may not, I don't know about the bond part, could be, you know, it just depends.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it, as usual. All right. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the boards, I have a few items in front of you this afternoon. The first one being our monthly finance report. So this report will be as of the month ended, February 29th. So we'd be looking at eight months out of the fiscal year. About 66.7% of the budget would be what we would anticipate at this point. So to look at your overall major categories, general funds specifically, our revenues that are monthly, that are consistent, they are at that 66% mark or above, which is what we would want to see. Overall, what the total general fund revenue collection is at 67.3%, so just above that mark. But that's going to, that fluctuates because the vast majority of our revenues, property taxes, and we collect those once or twice a year. And so really, the mark that we look at is that monthly mark on sales taxes, other local. So for expenditures, all of our departments, other than the ones that typically are higher because everything's front-loaded and it slowly comes down as we move throughout the year at that 66% or below, okay? So to graphically show that, for the revenues for the month, you can see for February, we're down a little bit compared to February of last year, but we were up a little bit in January. So there's nothing of any significance to that, just the timing. For year-over-year in our major categories, you can see that revenues, for the most part, are up a little for all of our property taxes, other local, and our state revenue. So for real estate, just to show that, there was a little bit of change during the month since January. It's still behind from where we were this time last year, .1%, $13,000. But the important thing for us is that we're just over now 50% of the budget, which is where we would expect to be with twice-a-year real estate collection. So in essence, we've met budget at this point for where we would want to be at this time of year in our real estate tax. So personal property for that one. So we did, we are seeing good collections on personal property. You can see in February, it's up a little bit where it was this time last year. And so this year was the restoration of the reduction that we did for the price inflation, the peak. So if you notice the 20% increase, that basically reflects that. If you remember, we reduced the assessed value by 22% last year. So we're about even par. What we're monitoring on personal property, it will not impact necessarily the rest of this fiscal year. But as we're looking at budget, vehicle values are starting to come down. What that means for a January 1st assessment, which is what the Commissioner's Office has to use for what will be due December 5th of this year, we're continuing to monitor. But when we're looking at new and used vehicle prices, values, they're starting to come down in the market at this point. The backlog of inventory is starting to catch up. So we've seen a couple of articles in the last month that are indicating that. Don't have data from the Commissioner's Office on native values at this point. It's really too early in the process for that. But something we are monitoring as we look to prepare for next year. So local sales tax, we had a good month. So if you remember, sales tax is collected by the state and then remitted to the county. So there's a two-month lag. So the February collections are actually December sales, which would be our peak, what we would expect. So you can see the line with the blue line here. We had a very good month. So year-over-year, I mean, we're up pretty much every month on sales taxes. It's about a 15% increase year-over-year. We're about 79, almost 80% of the budget. We would want to be at least at 66%, so we are exceeding our budget on sales taxes at this point.
Brian, could I ask a question about the sales tax? I'm concerned, and I've brought this up before, how inflation is inflating that sales tax figure. It looks good on paper, but I personally think a lot of that's due to inflation.
We don't receive reports on it. I can't, other than anecdotally agree with you, that I would say that we probably, a good portion of that is going to be year-over-year inflation. And inflation has moderated some, but what you're seeing is going to be impacted by inflation. It's not pure volume of sales. Yes, sir, that's an accurate assessment.
Okay, thank you.
So for meals tax, meals tax is relatively flat compared to last month, year-over-year. For February, we were down a little bit compared to February of last year. We're still at 4% growth year-over-year, about $41,000. We are at 72% of budget, which is above where we would expect to be. That's that 66% benchmark. So meals taxes is up slightly, not significantly, but it is something we're monitoring as well to see. That's an indicator of if people are pulling back from discretionary spending, in a sense. Occupancy tax has been an interesting year, as you noticed from the chart. It's kind of been all over the place. It's still down. It's been consistently down compared to prior year, down 11%. It's not a huge budget driver, if you notice, I mean, it's $36,000. So for the overall general fund budget, not a huge driver of our revenue. But the concerning part now is it's dipped below the 66% or our benchmark. We're now at just under 65%. So if it picks up in the coming summer months, that's something where we could still meet budget. But I think for us, what we're looking at is, just like meals tax, this is a typical bellwether. So you might have some who, instead of cutting out meals first, they're going to cut out vacation or trips because a lot of this is short-term rentals. The next thing we're going to monitor is, do we start seeing a dip in our meals tax as people continue to pull back on their expenses? So for expenditures, for February, we were up a little bit in February, down in January. To categorically break that down for you, we do have increases across the board. That's to be expected in these categories because our departments, our budgets are heavily personnel-driven. And so none of these are outside of the realm. If you remember, on the percentages on the first slide, they're still within what was anticipated in the budget. So even though expenditures look to be up, they're within budgeted expectations. To categorically break that down for you, social services, again, tends to be their personnel more than anything else in their budget. CSA is up, and CSA looks to continue to be up, just double-digit increases on that. It's across the state. There are several complicating factors with CSA. So we'll continue to provide more information to the board in various means, budget work session or otherwise. But CSA is going to continue to be a cost driver even in the next year, and that's something the state is grappling with as well.
Brian, if I may, real quickly. I'm sure we'll be dealing with these things at CPMT. However, I know we did an analysis a year or two back, you and Mr. Whitlow may recall, where we were comparing our expenditures for CSA to some of our neighboring localities. And there was an anomaly in that analysis because we were far exceeding spending in CSA. So I'm wondering, would a more current analysis show us that the others are perhaps catching up? I would have to think they are because of the vendor increases that we're having. But I think it would be an interesting look to see what the other localities are experiencing.
Certainly. We can provide that comparative analysis. Occasionally, we'll look at some categories. I think some are, some we're still. What I would consider for our population, our demographics, higher than I would think we should be. I don't think that is an indication of the management of the program by any means. But I do, to your point, it is data, and it is data that we would like to be able to use to make decisions.
Well, I mean, we're approaching a million-dollar increase in the upcoming budget for CSA. That is most significant.
It is.
And a lot of that's out of our control. But, you know, that anomaly still bothers me to this day. And so my interest in finding out our neighboring localities, is it continuing to be an anomaly that we really need to work more on? I'm not quite sure what else we can do, but that, just that increase of a million bucks is very concerning.
Yes, ma'am. We've had internal discussions, and so as to how we could possibly manage that. And so there'll be some items that we're working on internally. And Ms. Smith, you'll probably, as the rep on CPMT, hear some of that. But the board in general, as we move forward, managing what we can this year, but even in the next fiscal year, how can we at least manage the cost of the program? To your point, some of that is out of our control. They're mandated. What we can control, we certainly want to make sure we're running the program efficiently.
Yeah, we've got to take care of our kids.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the hard part of all of this, is what the costs have done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The CSA budget has been a problem for several years. These unfunded mandates, they just keep on mounting up. We have no control over it.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I've often wondered why Franklin County. There are some theories going around, but that's what they are, theories. Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Brian, looking under the accounts payable, since we're talking about this, under comprehensive services, I was looking through some of these line items. Youth Connect, Solutions That Empower People, Mosaic Group. What percentage are these things going up compared to last year? Do you have a ballpark? Because it looks to me like they've gone up exponentially.
Well, they certainly have. A lot of the ones you mentioned, Step and Mosaic, those are private day, special education, private day vendors. They're double-digit. It's going to vary by vendor. I think those are going to be anywhere in your 10% to 20% range, depending on the vendor. The challenge that we have is, as a locality, there's a lack of options. So we have very little negotiating power. We're just thankful to have a spot for some of these kids who really need their services. So, but I do think, you know, Step, which is Life's Academy, is a local vendor here in town. And so there are some possibilities that we could explore as staff. I don't know that it would save money, but at the very least, it may keep our kids local. The rest are getting transported to Roanoke for a lot of their private day, their education. But for most of our vendors across the board, we're seeing double-digit. It's somewhere in the 10% to 20% range.
Well, I think for my part and the board, I know we've had discussions with the school system about a local in-house facility or whatever you want to call it. I think we need to make that a continual discussion moving forward to see if we can't trim down on some of these fees. I mean, it's four pages of unbelievable numbers.
It is a lot. The factor of the cost-benefit analysis has always been, we receive about, in CSA, roughly 70% reimbursement from the state. So to bring it in-house for our public school system, making the numbers work, has always been a challenge in order to do appropriate, and space has been an issue before. So now, that might be something that's changing, and something we can certainly look at. And I think that was four or five years ago, we looked at that analysis. So certainly time, I think, to dust it off with the challenges we're seeing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So fund balance and reserves, no real change from last month. But I will draw your attention to the school number of the $3,588, because that's in the executive summary on a separate item. So I want to address that on a request from the school system. That is their prior fiscal year, year-end surplus. And so we'll come back to that on a carryover request for them. The capital reserve did drop a little bit. We paid the invoice for the painting on the tank in Union Hall. And so it was just over a million. Now it's $995,000. So if you look at your balance, that's different from last month. So I wanted to point that out. So for the economic update, the CPI increased in February 3.2%. That was above expectations, continues to be difficult to tame. Of course, the 2% benchmark for the Federal Reserve. At the January meeting, they did not change anything as far as the rate. The next meeting, of course, is today and tomorrow for the Federal Reserve. I think with the February data, most indications are there won't be any decreases in the rate anytime soon. Likely the summer at the earliest. We monitor that because, obviously, while rates are high, the offset of that is we do earn interest on that while on our deposits in the bank. So when that rate starts dropping, we as staff have to monitor, okay, are we going to meet budget? Because that's helping to fund our operating budget at this point, those interest earnings. So for a state budget update, the General Assembly did submit a budget to the governor, and the governor is currently reviewing that with possibly any amendments or vetoes. It did not include any of the tax reduction proposals of the governor's budget. It did include additional tax on sales, digital products. It did restore some funding or ad funding for our public education. And so for us, until that's really worked out, we're not sure what that means. But it could help some in the sense of the shortfall with funding in the school system for additional state funding with some of the General Assembly proposals. They did propose a 3% cost of living increase for state-supported local employees, our constitutional office employees and school employees. And for those, in the proposed budget that we're undergoing now, those were proposed to be funded at the current rates, essentially. So as we go through that budget process, we are in step with what the General Assembly right now has sent to the governor as far as being able to fund and keep up.
So Brian, does that include the non-SOQ positions?
It does right now.
It does?
It does.
Okay.
Yes, in the proposed budget, we funded, proposed funding of 3% across the board for all county and school employees. So that would include for the school system, the non-SOQ, and for the county, the non-state support, our true local employees. Yes, ma'am. The proposed budget did not include any funding for the local composite index. Haven't seen a hold harmless in there. Basically, the next date is the governor reviews. The reconvene session is scheduled to start on April 17th. So of course, we're beyond the point of needing to at least set the real estate rate for the bills to go out by that point. Whether or not we adopt a budget, we have time on that, should we so need. But that's part of the difficulty of the budgeting process, is a lot of the decisions we're making are based on estimates and guesses without the process being fully complete. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, any more questions for Brian on the budget? Anyone, before he moves on to the insurance. Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. So the other agenda item, or the next agenda item, is for the health insurance renewal for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. It'll start July 1st. And so for the insurance renewal, we typically, last year, if you remember, we issued an RFP for dental and vision, along other things. And so we were able to ensure rate-lock agreements in those for last year. For this year, we have one more renewal with Anthem. It looks like that we will be having to go out for an RFP next year. Claims were better this year. If you remember, we had a very significant 25% increase last year. Claims were better this year, but they were still around a 10% increase. After we negotiated with Anthem through our consultant, USI, we were able to get it down to a 7.6% increase. A lot of high-dollar claims still driving our plan. There are some, and a lot of them are conditions that aren't necessarily things we can do anything about. So they're maybe chronic or genetic or other things. It's not something that we could come to you as staff and recommend, let's change this in the plan, or let's create a wellness program to address some of these items. It's just the nature. It's just the nature of the employee pool. But for next year, what has been proposed is the attachment in your packet. And so it would be what we are proposing and what Mr. Whitlow proposed in the proposed budget was a 7.6% across the board. However, he is proposing that the county pick up the employee portion. So there would be no cost increase to the employees for next fiscal year. However, that is in the proposed budget. As we move forward, if there are cost reduction measures, that'll be something we'll have to address. So that's why we wanted to make sure if, depending as we go, even if we prove something today, don't want the board to be surprised if we come back in a scenario or a budget reduction option as budget discussions progress of changing that. But if you look at the attachment, that will show you, the way to read that is the current schedule on the left is the rates that we have today. That'll say 7-1-2023. Looks like this in your packet if you have it.
Okay.
And then to the right is the new proposed rates that would have the column 7-1-2024. So if you'll notice on the employee, which it would be the EE column, the column with the header that says EE, that's the employee. The ER column is the employer. That would be our county cost we're budgeting for. There are no changes to the rates or both the Key Care 30 or the High Deductible Health Plan. There are no changes to the benefits in either of those plans. So as proposed, we would have, the employees would have the same benefits, the same network, no changes, and there would be no cost increase to them in their monthly premiums. So now for the county, it's about a $412,000 increase, which was in the proposed budget that the board received earlier in the month. So with that, that is what we're asking for at this point is for the board's authorization to approve the rates and to move forward in negotiating with Anthem. Even though they're effective July 1st, open enrollment will start in May. So we do have to have some level of decisions settled on that for us to be able to get with the open enrollment process started promptly in May for our July 1st implementation date. So, Ms. Chairman, that's the request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brian Smith?
Brian, thank you. For the Health Savings Account.
Yes, ma'am.
This, if I'm reading this correctly, we're making a contribution of $40,000. Is that our contribution to the Health Savings Account? What is that 40,000?
Yes, ma'am. It is the estimated contribution. So what we fund is $1,000 for individual coverage in the Health Savings Account or $2,000 for any other tier of coverage. So what we estimate is how many employees during the, I say we, consultant, USI will estimate how many employees during the year will take the plan and what tier and then what that estimate will be. So that is just an estimate of 40. It's not a hard cost to the plan. It'll depend on who signs up for the high deductible and their health election as to how we fund the HSA.
So those decisions will be made after, I guess, after the policy goes or close to going into effect so that those numbers are known at that point?
Those decisions will be made in open enrollment.
Okay.
And so in May, when that open enrollment, employees will choose whether they stay on their current plan or they take the high deductible and what their tier would be. So after open enrollment in May or early June, we typically know what those numbers will be. Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel, is this contribution by algorithm or is it just a recommendation from HSI?
It is a recommendation, well.
Westside, excuse me.
Yeah, that's all right. The contribution is, the estimate on the HSA is their estimate. The rest of the percentage increases are specifically from Anthem based on claims experience and the renewal.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris Quinn?
Brian and Chris, I have a couple of things. So I'm assuming that the school employees are not in these stats, right? And have you ever considered pooling both the county and the school together for better buying power?
The way I understand it, we at some point in our history have had a joint plan. I don't know if it was with the school system, but I know we did with the town of Rocky Mount. And so I think from what I understand, historically, that became unmanageable, whether it was the county or the town or somebody had a very bad claims year and they were driving everybody else's premiums up. So the decision was made to split that out. The school system is a self-insured plan right now. We are fully insured. I think the struggle with that in integrating them now would be one would have to go one way or the other. So the county would have to go self-insured or the school system would have to go fully insured. And there would be the question of reserves. I think we've had a discussion previously about the proper reserves to have in the self-insured fund for the school system. So we would want to make sure that was worked out. But from a pure buying power perspective, it is a limitation for us in negotiating because we just don't have the count. We have nearly 400 full-time employees. You count part-time, some that are offered health insurance plan, it's about 5, 550. And so nowhere near a large number of employees. If you added the school system, it would add to negotiating and buying power. Now, I'm not recommending it, but that would be one option to look at. Yes, sir.
And then the second, I'll follow up on an email, both Brian and Chris. I'm concerned with the acquisition strategy for the healthcare where we go out to bid every five years. And so the first year of the plan is clearly competitive, right? Everybody's come in or maybe just two companies have come in, but you have competitive bids for the first year. And then the follow-on years, the rates are negotiated by USI. So you have somebody, an intermediary, that's trying to help you. However, you've really lost all leverage for negotiating those rates in years two through five. And that doesn't feel good to me because it feels like the insurance companies can game the system a bit. They can go low the first year knowing that, well, you're a captive audience in the second year and they can raise the rates, not, you know, to no limit, but clearly higher than they might have if they were in a competitive situation. And so it just makes me wonder if there's a better way. So it's not that I would be against a multi-year contract, but if the second years, two through five, were based on some kind of metrics that you could put your fingers to that would take away the leverage that the insurance company has now. So for example, your claims history might be one of the metrics and the CPI might be a metric. And maybe it's a CPI for medical care that's a metric, but you would both agree ahead of time in years two through five, our rates are going to go up according to these metrics that are in a formula. And it would take away that gaming and that total loss of leverage that you have now in negotiating those rates. So anyway, that's my comment about your acquisition strategy.
So let me clarify a couple of points. We typically go out for RFP every five years. That's just historically what we've done. We're not locked in. So when we issue an RFP, I looked up the Anthem contract. So we, the contract is in one-year increments. So when we awarded, we awarded it for one year with four one-year renewal options. So if there was a bad year and we wanted to issue an RFP and go out again, we had that option. We have that option. We even approached that option last year with a 25% increase. So in consultation with USI, the claims are what they are. And so the only two real providers with the network in our area are Anthem and Aetna. And it just is a limitation for us to get any competitive rate. We've looked at other providers. There are some others. And from what I understand, some are gaining in the market. But I think before we went with Anthem, I do not remember the provider we had, but there was a real network issue. And so part of the reason to make sure, and I think our HR staff really felt the pressure of that from employees in that switch. So we've really tried to keep with a large network provider. At this time, it was Anthem and Aetna. So maybe something has changed in that. But USI's recommendation last year was to stick with Anthem with the renewal because if we went out in the market with the claim experience that we had, there was no guarantee that it would come down and it might actually go up at that point because Anthem would have to go back and rebid it and then they would be kind of resetting in a sense out of contract. So I want to assure you, every year we do look at this on our renewal, we typically get a preview from USI of what our claims look like around October, November. And then we really start our renewal in the December to January timeframe, working with Anthem. And then USI continues those negotiations. So I want to be very clear that we do not lock in a five-year rate and we have no negotiating power. I think what we weigh when we look at that is the cost, the cost of staff to issue an RFP, the time commitment, what savings might be gained, what the market looks like, what our claims experience are. And the last two years, we've had just really significant claims experiences. The other thing we worry about, especially now, and this factored in a little bit last year, is it's difficult to find a primary care physician. So if we switch providers and an employee's physician is not covered in network, it was a real risk that they couldn't find another physician. So we weren't willing to gamble based on that from the knowns to the unknowns. So just wanted to give the board some insight and Mr. Quinn on your questions on what process we go through on that. For what we have and the way we've negotiated, it could certainly be every year we could issue any, an RFP, any point, any point in time in that five-year window. It's not something that's locked in.
And your plan is to go out next year now? Is that your current plan?
We would have to be. So this year, the next fiscal year, 2025, is the last one-year renewal. So essentially, we would have to issue an RFP next year. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, we're going to have to take action on this. I'll open the floor and entertain any motions that we need to make in regards to the renewal of our health insurance program.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion if it's appropriate.
It's appropriate.
I'd make a motion to approve the FY 2425 health rates as presented.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call? Any further questions before a call? Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. I think, Mr. Carter, for sake of time, if we can save that for your little talk for the retiree insurance proposal or questions, maybe till Thursday, briefly there for the sake of time.
Yes, sir.
And then your grant funding appropriation for the middle school roof in HVAC.
Yes.
We'll do that today.
Today, okay.
It won't take you but a couple minutes on it.
It won't take me. So, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, so this was something that our school system previously brought. And so it's a carryover out of that 3.5 million I mentioned in the financial report. A portion of that, this $2,407,033 is related to federal money. And so I verified that that money did hit our bank account. It was in the prior fiscal year. So it's just sitting in our bank account waiting for reappropriation for our school system to spend. We do need to spend this and they have previously dedicated this on the middle school. Cash flow purposes at the middle school now, the school system is out of money. So in order to continue with the middle school project, they need this money appropriated so they can spend it. As of March, as of this month, there'll be out of money for that project without this appropriation. And then we're waiting on the grant to be received this month, hopefully awarded by the Virginia Department of Education. But after that, we would then access the literary fund loan, but that's still in process. So what we would really like is the board's approval to carry over, and really it's federal money, so it's really grant money. It's not a discretionary item for us. We would have to give it to the school system. We can't repurpose that for counting purposes. So just ask for board's approval to approve and appropriate that carryover request of the 2.4 million for the Benjamin Franklin Middle School project.
Supervisor, just a quick question.
Anybody got any questions for Brian on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. So this $2.4 million technically being grant funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is it being rolled up under the auspices of carryover when carryover is typically variance off of operating?
Yes. I think it's just the way in which we have historically operated. So our capital projects roll. However, this money came in into the operating fund because of ESRA money. It could have been used for anything. Our school staff, I'd say anything, there were parameters, but they specifically dedicated it for the BFMS project. And so hence why it's coming back this way. We, our policy, and when we approve our resolution every year, pretty much anything the school system does not spend, it automatically reverts back to the county and the general fund. It's just our appropriation practice. And so, but I agree with you. Historically, I don't think historically we have this issue. The school system is, when they receive money, it's typically probably reimbursement. It's not upfront. This is a little bit of anomaly of why we don't see this typically every year in a carryover request.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions on that? All right, we need to take action on this. We can make a motion to approve, to table or deny. So I'll open the floor to entertain any motions that one of you may have.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the school's carryover request and to appropriate funding in the amount of $2,407,033 for the school construction entitlement grant program to be used for the BFMS HVAC renovation project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, we'll take a, we need to take about a 10-minute break here and we will reconvene. No, 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 no. Ms. Doughty, you come first. Beth Doughty, you come. Getting ahead of the game, getting ahead of the game. No, ma'am, we're getting ahead of the game. Please, you come.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll take a break.
Be happy. I'm fine if you want to take a break. Okay. All right, here we go. Does that work?
You might have to click it on. Is it on?
Let me figure out where. Oh, I got it, okay. Doesn't appear to be. I'll use the keyboard. Okay, thank you very much. Whoops. Pleased to be here today and provide you an update on economic development. I'm happy to do this whenever you want, although I'm not sure how much longer I'm going to be here. So let me go ahead and jump right in. What I want to do is explain kind of where we are in economic development. I always kind of, I got to find a place where I can go, but I'm set. Okay. I'm going to talk about our overall economic development program of work and where we are and what we have and are accomplishing. You know, I always characterize economic development as spinning plates. We have lots of stuff going on. It's not one single thing. It's a lot of different ways that economic developers and the locality and the community work to generate wealth in the community. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is connecting with existing businesses. 80% of your job growth is going to come from existing businesses. That's kind of the template of that. And so it's really important that we have an organized, consistent and deliberate approach to working with our existing businesses. So so far this calendar year, we have three active expansion projects with existing business. That's, you know, that's really good news, to be honest with you. And we expect that we'll hopefully see those things come to fruition. The next part is engaging with new opportunities, which frankly is the typical understanding or, you know, perspective on economic development that is all about attraction and location. And that is really important, except it's 20% of your job growth if you just look at a typical template of that. But nonetheless, it's really important because there is significant community energy and resources invested in that. So year over year, for the calendar year, our prospect activity inquiries, it's up 60%. That's significant if we look historically on how the activity has been. So I'm really pleased. So the question, you know, is where does that come from? There are a couple of different ways to look at it. One is we have really, I've really worked on strengthening our relationship with our partners in this. So the Virginia Economic Development Partnership and the Roanoke Regional Partnership are very much our partners in this. So they spend their time in working to kind of cover the waterfront on where the opportunities are and then sending them our way. Our job on this is to be prepared for it. So we have to be prepared with the product that is, that fits the needs of locating business and industry. And I think Franklin County is doing a, is doing a good and evolving job of doing that. But frankly, our relationship with our partners who have greater resources, more time and more people to do that is really, really important. And then the third thing is small businesses, and our job is a connector. Our job is to connect them with the resources that they need, the programs that can assist their establishment and growth. So, so year to date, we have about 15 small businesses that we've helped connect to the resources. The kind of resources that we connect them to are the Small Business Development Center, training and education resources, different programs. The Small Business Development Center is a really important partner in this just because they have the expertise in where the resources are, how to match them, and how to counsel these small businesses that help strengthen their opportunity for success. The next thing that I've been working on is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So, you know, when I got here, it was a work in progress, but I'm pleased to report that the consultant that we've been working with on this is preparing the final report now. What I've done in the interim was take the matrix, it's called, of strategies that revolve around these five initiatives: housing, livability, workforce, economic resiliency, and the economic development framework for Franklin County. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll be able to have a report out to you. But what I've done is I've taken the draft of the strategies, I've shared them with the departments. It's not just a plan that is to be implemented by the Department of Economic Development in Franklin County, but it is really a holistic plan that brings together, you know, the expertise and the responsibilities of a variety of not only departments in Franklin County local government, but also out in the community, the kind of agencies, you know, that are, some of them I've talked about already, the Small Business Development Center or the Roanoke Regional Partnership or others that will be involved in helping implement the strategies that are included in this plan. It was really important, I think, to get the kind of confirmation or buy-in of everybody that's involved in this plan so that that's kind of a, an important step, I think, in guaranteeing the success of the execution of the plan. So that's where we are on that, and I think you'll be pleased to see what a holistic strategy it is and how it can benefit the county. It's a great opportunity for the county's economic development efforts moving forward to be organized, to be deliberate. Deliberate is one of my favorite words because I think it's really critical that we're not just flying by the seat of our pants in how we execute economic development, but we're deliberate and there's a thought pattern behind it, and there are outcomes in sight that measure the, you know, the effectiveness of our actions. So I'm really pleased for Franklin County to be able to have this moving forward. And as I said, I hope at the next meeting, we'll be able to share that.
Ms. Doughty, before you move forward, would you give a definition of livability as it is related to this slide?
I would say it's quality of life. You could also call it quality of life. I think that's a more common term for it. I like livability because I think it's a more modern term for it. And what it is are the kinds of, kinds of strategies that will attract people to Franklin County, that will retain people in Franklin County, that will, you know, kind of elevate their everyday experiences in Franklin County. So it, it's a talent strategy, kind of. It also is overall supportive of creating economic growth.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the strategy?
Any other questions at this point?
I have a couple. So, so Beth, first of all, thank you very much for temporarily holding down the position for now many months. But a couple of things. One of the comments you made is how we're dependent upon others because of our limited resources. And when you benchmark us against other counties that have really hit it out of the park, you know, is, is it true for other counties that they have actually relied on others? Because my sense, before you answer the question, is that nobody will have the energy and the passion and the enthusiasm about helping the county more than somebody that works here, lives here, and is trying to get the county ahead as, as opposed to organizations and resources outside of the county. And so when you look around, what do you, what do you see that those that are really moving ahead? What are they doing differently than we're doing?
I would agree with you on the characterization of those who work and live and are invest, invested, you know, or vested in the county definitely bring a certain set of skills or energy to a position. Historically, I think Franklin County's economic development has been underfunded and particularly understaffed. If you look at, okay, you know, Baratuck County is always referenced as somebody who's hit it out of the park. Well, Baratuck County is, has more staff. Baratuck County also has a smaller land mass, you know, to spread its resources. But also, every, you know, I used to run the Regional Economic Development Partnership, and I could, and that's an example of an organization. Or you could take Virginia's Blue Ridge as another example of an organization, you know, that just brings extra firepower to what you can do. I mean, as a county, you can't afford every, you know, software program out there. You can't afford to be traveling every week to consultant events or whatever. And so they're, they're bringing, they're bringing extra power to what you're doing. And in some cases, they're bringing extra expertise, you know. You know, you hire a plumber to fix your, you know, your faucets. It's just an example of bringing in, I would say, more firepower to your efforts.
Okay. And so I think you hit on an interesting difference. It seems interesting to augment our capabilities with the outside resources, but in many cases, it seems like we're dependent on those outside resources. And if we could better fund our own operation, we might not be so dependent, and we could truly use those outside resources to augment. So then, so I have one other.
I would use the word complementary is kind of, you know, I think that, that those outside resources, they do augment, but they're also complementary to what you're doing.
Okay. Then this is a two-part question, and you can, I'll put the two parts together, but, you know, based on your time here, what would be your vision of the perfect person full-time in your current role? Part, part A, and part B is, well, how do we get that perfect person? That's your vision of who should be in your role?
Someone with like six hands would be good. But I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, to be flippant about it. You need someone who, who is, I'm, I'm a believer in someone who understands economic development and understands it in the way I've tried to explain it today. You know, in terms of spinning plates and all the different, you know, tentacles that are, you know, that go out from the core issue of economic development. I think that most of all, you need someone who's experienced, is what I would say. There's a lot in my day-to-day in this role, there is just a lot of nuts and bolts stuff that has to be done. Things like writing grant requests, things like filing reimbursements for grant requests, you know, as well as answering the questions that come through every single day about a variety of different issues. So I think it is a technical position, more so than a sales position, if that makes sense.
So what do you think is holding us back from filling this role? And maybe that's not a good question for you, but for Chris and or.
We have second round interviews this week. So hopefully, we'll have somebody. But, you know, I mean, I think Chris and my criteria on it is someone who knows what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beth, thank you for your presentation. Just as a follow-up to some of Dan's comments, a lot of times, I think it boils down to financial capabilities. And I think Baratuck Commons took, what, 30 years to develop approximately? And also, Dan, their tax rate's 79 cents per hundred dollars. So they've got a lot more money to play with than we do here in Franklin County.
Those are, those are all good points. Every loc, and, and really what I would say is every locality is different. You know, it's hard to say, well, what Baratuck County did, or Henry County did, or Pennsylvania did. It doesn't necessarily translate to what we do. And I think we, that you as policymakers, Chris as, as a manager, economic development director, have to really understand, you know, what the unique character is of Franklin County, to really understand Franklin County's potential. And, you know, I think the thing, just to come back to the strategic plan, to understand how to get there, which to be, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not sure we had a roadmap before, but this is a roadmap, and it's definitely the way to manage this process in a, in a structured, deliberate, you know, way.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to piggyback on Mr. Quinn, I'm Beth. So with your time and tenure here, as limited as it is, and I hate that, you're such a jewel and an asset.
Thank you.
What would you envision or recommend in terms of capacity of staff reporting to the Economic Development Director so that we could? I'm looking for outcomes that are measurable, which the strat plan will do.
Yeah.
And so just if you look at a generic model, with that strat plan, you know what's in it and where we are as a county. What would you project would be an adequate staff?
The first thing you need is administrative support. I, you know, I have no administrative support. I don't think that the previous Beth had administrative support. So I would say it's probably the first thing you need. But I also think you need at least two people, you know, other, two professionals in the department, economic development professionals in the department. And that's, I think that's a good place to start, but I'm not sure it's the end game for you all. Thank you.
Please define administrative support. As is applicable to your statement.
Administrative support that can help, you know, you know, contact people, if follow, you know, can work with, with direction from the director or another professional in the department to do tasks that, you know, take up, take up time.
This is the person with six hands.
Yeah, yeah, well, every, everybody needs six hands. But that's why I need six hands. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So there's one more thing that I wanted to talk about in terms of the economic development, terms of the economic development overview for the department, and that is, you know, kind of Summit View because our, it's our primary economic development focus. As you know, the county purchased 500 acres. It's a former farm that began developing it in 2015, I believe. It's surrounded on all sides of, you know, with agriculture and low-density housing. There are 340 developable acres. We have a 100-acre site in the park that's designated a Tier Four site. I'll go into that in a little bit, a little bit more detail. Summit View currently has two tenants, which is Valley Star Credit Union and Stick Pack. Stick Pack's doubled its employment and added two more shifts in the last two years. So that's an example of, you know, how this process is supposed to work. There are about 200 employees in the park. What, you know, I would say, as someone who came in kind of from the outside, although I was around in 2015 when Southway became Summit View, I would say that the land purchase was the first step and, but not the only step, and that work's been underway to, to invest and develop the infrastructure that makes the park competitive. So let's talk a little bit about that. Last year, what's called a reverse site study was contracted with GLS Consulting, which is one of the leading site selection consultants in the United States. And so this analysis identified improvements that would raise Summit View from a fourth-place ranking to a first-place ranking among site selectors in certain industries, industries like controlled environment agriculture or fabricated metal manufacturing and other advanced manufacturing. So you see on this chart, these are all the suggested improvements. The ones in black, I'm gonna talk about as real accomplishments for Franklin County and then some that are potential moving forward. The first one was the suggestion of a graded pad. We have the only prepared 100-acre site in the market. That's the Roanoke Region MSA market. It has a 57-acre pad, 33 acres are graded, and that's all thanks to grants from the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program and the Virginia Tobacco Commission. No county money went into, to the construction of that, those projects. We have some plans to continue that site preparation, including the demolition of some of these buildings that are, that are kind of non-functional now. So this site is what's called a Tier Four site in the Virginia Site Readiness Program. And the work that was done, creating the pad and grading it, is what got us to Tier Four. There are five tiers, but Tier Four is very attractive and a competitive advantage. It's the largest certified site in the region. In terms of the, of competitive position, Summit View is very well positioned, and this site in particular because of its uniqueness. And, you know, then also, looking forward, I think that you mentioned about it's a 20, 30-year process. Well, there's also the North Bay, which is, is the future growth of Summit View. And this is kind of the beginning here with the Dogwood site. The second thing that was mentioned, and that was natural gas, and that'll be in Franklin County, hopefully around June 30th. The construction of the gate station is soon to be complete, and construction of an eight-inch line that will deliver a significant amount of natural gas. Historically, because as I said, I've been around for a long time, natural gas was something that held back Franklin County from industrial development, and this is a big deal that improves your competitive position. The other item that was in that was an electric upgrade. So AEP is securing an option on property for a new substation that will increase electric capacity in the park. Also improved access, so the Connector Road that's under construction that will link kind of both sides of the South Bay of the park, completion in December 2024. And I just want to remind everyone that this road project is really a VDOT project, but it's funded completely by grants without any county dollars going into that. Also adequate water, so we have a 500,000-gallon water tank, you may have seen. Also, there are 750,000 gallons of available water for the park. And we, Chris and I have been talking with the Western Virginia Water Authority about some relatively minor operational changes that can bring it up to a million gallons per day, and, and that is a significant amount of water that is available through the park. So that brings us to the sewer upgrade. And that's the challenge facing us right now is sewer capacity. It's currently at 150,000 gallons per day. You know, as I mentioned, we've had a 60% increase in prospect activity for the first three months of 2024. And sewer capacity is gonna be critical for us taking advantage of the potential that the park has. We've had some leads that require more sewer than is available today, but, and, and those prospects have inquired about opportunity for upgrading that capacity. So we've applied for a Virginia Business Ready Sites Grant with the help of the Roanoke Regional Partnership that helped us put together the grant, and that would, and also a Tobacco Commission grant that, again, both of those grants, the grant dollars, it will not cost the county any new money. The matching money comes from money already spent on the park, but the grants will enable the county to get to at least 250,000 gallons per day and hopefully up to 400, 600,000 gallons per day. This is a huge opportunity, and I'm, you know, I'm, I hope, I hope this all, I hope this all works out. But I'm optimistic that we put in very good grant proposals on that. So that's, you know, that's kind of the last item on the to-do list that came out of the reverse site selection study. And, and I think when you look at this list, you can see, you know, all these things that we've been able to check off and accomplish. And as I said in the beginning, it was a matter of the infrastructure catching up to the park, the land, and I think we're, we are better positioned than ever, more competitive than ever, and have a unique product that's unavailable elsewhere in the region. That doesn't mean the product isn't available. That doesn't mean the product isn't available in other parts of Virginia, but not that many other parts of Virginia. So I think we're in a very good competitive position. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Is there any more questions?
Beth, what is the update on the intersection improvements of VDOT with the signalized intersection?
I don't know.
Mr. Whitlock?
Yeah, I can, Ms. Smith. As part of the connector road and the smart-scale project and the revenue sharing and the construction that's going on, and Beth, thank you for the overview today, just a reminder, those are all state and federal dollars of the construction of that. No, no county dollars are in that. But as you will recall, VDOT does have a specific criteria. And it's, it's in state administrative code that there has to be a certain traffic count before those signalizations are put in at the intersection. That being said, the, the intersections are designed to put the hard infrastructure in, if you will. It's just a matter of, it's the chicken or the egg in terms of the, of the volume. As the connector road is completed and as traffic along Brick Church funnels out into 220, US 220, VDOT, of course, will be doing their daily traffic counts, weekly traffic counts. And at some point, that, that signalization is triggered in terms of actually activating that signalization when that occurs.
Do we feel that the signalization is going to be problematic if it doesn't exist? For the types of inquiries we're getting? I'm, I'm thinking about large tractor-trailers and the like, that's going to need signalization there. Is it going to be impactful to, to our detriment if we don't get it?
I would say it'll be impact, impactful to getting the signalization. I don't know anything about transportation, but I'm going to say that I, I think it will be, those, that kind of a project, where those kinds of projects, and as the park, you know, continues to build out, that that will be impactful to getting the signalization. You know, it's one step at a time.
Thank you.
And, and to that, Ms. Smith and, and Beth noted, a lot of times it will depend on that prospect or that industry. If that industry is heavy into logistics, you know, tractor-trailers, as you mentioned, that's another conversation as to, you know, just cars or vehicles. If it's advanced manufacturing or communication centers and so forth, it really all depends on what that traffic will be, heavy truck or employee-traffic-related. Of, of course, you know, a significant prospect activity, staff certainly works with the EDP and the Governor's Office, you know, you know, working and coordinating back with VDOT to make sure that, the Commonwealth of Virginia certainly wants to make sure that a prospect is secured, you know, as those, as those prospects and opportunities occur.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else got anything? Sandy, we certainly appreciate this uplifting, I'm encouraged about this.
I would be if I were you. I mean, honestly.
About this, and especially in the times that we just came through, unprecedented, unheard-of times with the COVID epidemic and everything, this, this is very exciting news.
I think Franklin County has emerged from that period of time stronger than it was before because you had time to get a lot of stuff done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's very encouraging and should be to our citizenry, how this was done. Grants are tax dollars, but they're not local dollars. They came from federal and state grants, and this was also good. Thank you for your help.
Sure, thank you.
All right, we're going to take a, a 10-minute break. We need to do that. Regroup and then come back and take up the.
All right, Mr. Sandy, if you're prepared and ready for your.
Thank you.
The Fairham Property Housing Proposal Review.
You want me to go ahead? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I wanted to give you kind of an update on some things we've talked about over the past several months. The Fairham Property Housing Proposal, wanted to go over the, just review that, go over with you the process and the proposals that we received, and then looking forward at some next steps as we go through, continue to move through this process. So I know we've got a, a couple of new board members that really weren't part of this process when we started several months back. And so just wanted to go through some background to, to give everyone background, kind of let you know how we arrived at the proposal process. And so this is the Fairham parcel. When we reference the Fairham parcel, we're referring to this parcel in yellow. Approximately 84, 85 acres, county-owned land. It's directly west of Fairham College property. So if you can see the cursor on the screen, this is Fairham College property. The Blue Ridge Institute and Museum is, is here. And this is the property outlined in yellow here on our, on the map. There is, West Franklin Drive is, is an existing state-maintained road that goes up into almost the middle of the property, goes in a significant portion of the property. And then this unusual shape here kind of is a, an inlaid parcel under separate ownership of about five acres that's owned by the Saunders family there. So this, this property was purchased by the county in 1996. The estimated market value from a 2021 appraisal was 235 for the, the larger part, which is, is again, this part. And then there's a smaller piece here, about acre and a half, right on the corner of Route 40 and West Franklin Drive. That was, based on the appraisal, was estimated at 25,000. So I did just update those numbers based on the current reassessment numbers. And those numbers are 222,200 for the larger parcel and then 31,300 for the one-and-a-half-acre parcel. So those are the, the current values, or the most recent values that have kind of been assigned to, to these tracts of land there. The goal when, when we talked about this over a year or so ago was, the board was looking at a lot of the vacant property that was owned by the county. And no use was occurring on. They asked the, the staff at that time to look at several of these different parcels. This was also about the same time we were working on the village plan for Fairham. And so this property was identified as a, an opportunity for housing and, and other uses. And so a goal at that time was to turn it into a productive taxable use, fitting the visions as expressed in the village plan. And then also to balance the interests of the county developers and the community. So prior planning efforts here, as I just mentioned, Fairham Village Plan back in 2019, there was a housing, housing needs assessment done in, in 2020 by the Boeing Group. There was also, it wasn't just for this property, but there was a regional housing market study done by the Regional Commission in Roanoke in 2021. As I mentioned earlier, there was an appraisal of this property done in 2021 as well. The West Piedmont Planning District is also doing a regional housing study, and that'll be actually wrapping up here soon. So that's currently ongoing, but, but close, close to wrapping up. And then there was a master plan process that we initiated on this property, and that was with funding from Virginia Housing, and that was in 2023. All of those studies really pointed to the need for additional housing stock in the county, especially workforce housing. The master planning process, I'll just go through quickly. It was about a nine-month process funded by Virginia Housing. There were site reconnaissance, there were some community meetings, there was a work session with Fairham Forward. And then there were some stakeholder engagement sessions that you see listed here as well. The site, part of that work included a site assessment. And so again, this, this is the property here. There's an area outlined in, in red, which was considered kind of more of the develop, developable area of the property, if you will. It was determined that there was sufficient public and waters, public sewer and water capacity. The site assessment did point out a need for stormwater accommodations on site. It was very developable on the north end, which would be down towards Route 40. And the estimated area of the, of the 85 acres was about 60, 60 to 62 acres that would be kind of most developable. It gets steep as you go behind the in-holding property here. Gets pretty steep as it goes up towards the top of the mountain there. There are also, it was also noted that there are connections to the Fairham Trail system within the property and that there are significant cultural and recreational amenities in the area. And that goes even as far as, you know, Philpot Lake and the activities at Fairham College, Wade Park, you know, just those kind of things as well. The, there was a master plan framework that was developed as part of the master plan. And it was kind of developed into what, what they called land bay concepts. And so this was really designed to provide a flexible approach to divide the site into buildable bays or buildable areas. And they also to provide options for different land uses within those areas. There was also a concept of open space framework. And this was to provide a framework of open space, stormwater areas, and access and trails as organizing elements for the overall development. So there were really three different alternatives that were kind of developed based on that and, and based on looking at those different land bays, what could be accommodated, what the water and sewer capacity would kind of be able to handle. And so there were really three alternatives, A, B, and C. C being the most dense part of the development, A being kind of the, the lower end of the, of the development. And so I think alternative A was one we had talked about previously as, as what I think staff really felt was probably more likely to happen. Weren't really anticipating that, that this site would necessarily be several hundred housing developments or, or housing units, just based on, you know, the current climate out in that area. So this alternative A, roughly a, a single-family yield of, let's just say, 80 lots, 80 townhomes, and some civic and commercial spaces up in the front, was kind of what the overall analysis of the master plan had kind of indicated. And in the master plan is, again, it, it developed or demonstrated different alternatives for different housing types. And so the master plan was really envisioning that, you know, it wouldn't just be a mobile home park or it wouldn't just be single-family homes on two-acre lots. It was looking at really an opportunity to really have a variety of housing types. And so these were some of the housing types that were identified there that could be possible on this property. And that could range from large lots, single-family homes, all the way up to multifamily, multi-level apartments. All could be possibilities on this property. Couple other notes is that, you know, it could include patio homes since, for senior housing. Going back to the village plan, that's something we heard a lot in the village plan comments, was the need for kind of one-level living patio homes. Folks moving, not, not downgrading, at least downgrading from a larger house to, to a smaller house and being able to stay in the community. That's a lot of what we heard in the village plan meetings that we had as we were developing that plan. And then the other thing is just the flexibility in the mixing and matching of unit types across different land bays. In that master plan, there was also some development guidelines. And just, this is just a snippet of that, is, you know, it recommended development guidelines to create a strong sense of place, support economic development, enhance community well-being. The, the plan would be used by the county to ensure type and quality of development and also evaluate potential development proposals. There was, the guidelines, as I said, really envision a mixed or varied housing types. And that could be from workforce to senior housing, things like that. And the, the overall goal for this whole master plan and even the RFP process that I'll get into, really to maintain development flexibility and provide as much flexibility in the process as, as we could. So having completed that, we, we moved to another, the next step, kind of in the process, where we, the county issued a competitive request for proposals to potential developers for this property. And it was really a call for development proposals that would kind of mimic aspects of the master plan that was developed for the property. So just a couple of the, the bullet points was, you know, part of this process would help us identify developers who had a proven track record in, in the financial wherewithal to, to do a project. It also had elevation, evaluation criteria for how well it followed the master plan and addressed housing needs. The RFP, again, was, was crafted in such a way to, to maintain flexibility and allow flexibility in the ultimate defined proposal and, for the property. And then also allow developers to propose financial incentives. So it was really an opportunity to say, well, as an example, a developer could say, well, we agreed to build, let's just pick a number, 200 units. We want the county to, to give us the property. We'll take care of the waterline extensions, sewer extensions. We'll take care of the site development. But in exchange for that, we would request that the property be given to the county. So something like that. It could have been any kind of proposal from the applicants, from the proposals to say how they would develop this property and what they would expect in return from the county as part of that process. And then the RFP process, again, was looking towards that original goal of returning the site to a taxable asset that fulfilled the goals of the village plan and the community. Some, just, this just comes out of the RFP document itself, and the requested services of the proposal was successful experience. So looking for responders with successful experience, creating mixed finance, mixed income and/or mixed-use housing developments, serving a wide range of household incomes, including workforce and affordable housing. The proposal for development that considers the Fairham Property Master Plan was also one of the, kind of the criterias of the RFP. There was a RFP review committee, and that was made up of myself, as well as Mr. Carter, Lisa Cooper, the Director of Planning, Stephanie Mathina, Principal Planner, Sean Campbell, who is with West Piedmont Planning District Commission, he's their Housing Programs Coordinator. And then also Will Cockrell, who's a consultant who worked with us on the master plan document, was also part of that team. So we, we put the proposals out last fall, late summer last fall. We, we did receive two proposals for the, for this potential development of the property. And the, the groups that would all refer to as the Friends of Fairham Park was, was one of the proposals that we received. The other was a group identified as Human Shelter Incorporated, who also submitted a proposal. So just a couple of brief notes, Friends of Fairham, it's, it's a new nonprofit organization founded in 2023. Their, their proposal was, is a, really a, a park plan that included some modular duplex housing development along the existing road leading into the property. There was, in their proposal was a partnership with Nationwide Homes. And, and so that was a proposal to use modular units as part of the housing piece of their proposal. Human Shelter is a, was a partnership between a nonprofit organization and a Class A contractor with a manufactured home dealer's license. This was a basic layout of manufactured housing, really didn't include any other facilities, recreation or, or commercial. I think the, from the documents that they submitted, the recreational piece, they really expected that someone else would build that and it wouldn't be part of their proposal. And, and their proposal for the housing was a partnership with Fleetwood Homes, which would be manufactured indoor modular units would be part of their housing proposal or was part of their housing proposal. So just diving a little deeper, I'm not going to go through every detail of each proposal. You have copies of those in your packet, but just hitting just a few notes on each of those. So starting with the Friends of Fairham Park proposal, in their document talks about the mission of the proposal was really to ensure that the beauty of the 84.17-acre parcel of taxpayer-owned land in Fairham is not lost to a large-scale residential development, and that will forever alter the landscape of our community. It was a park recreational development, was kind of noted as a, as a priority of the development. And then that was also to ensure that a revenue stream was present to assist with the development of the housing phases, as well as to allow adequate time for the new nonprofit to establish themselves and be eligible for grant funding. The proposed recreational features included trails, bathhouse, restroom, pavilion and picnic areas, amphitheater, dog park, playground, primitive camping, and RV sites. There was an offer through this proposal to purchase the property from the county for $200,000. Also that the proposal recognized the need for grants and working with the county to secure grants for development and housing assistance. The housing development portion of it was ADA-compliant homes, for the most part, and really looking at duplex units being developed. And again, modular duplex units. And those would be either two and/or three-bedroom type units that were primarily being proposed. There was reference in the proposal to a Martinsville Five Points Community project as a blueprint for the attainable housing solutions. And that was a project that Nationwide Homes had worked on as well. And so kind of tying some of the experience that Nationwide Homes folks had with the Martinsville Five Points Community would be something that they looked to replicate. Martinsville Five Points Community would be something that they looked to replicate here on this property. And this is just a may not be clearly visible, not too bad. This is a just a park map that was part of the proposal from the Friends of Farum proposal, just outlining kind of, again, this is the existing road coming into the development with the duplexes being along each side of the road coming in. And then as you reach the back, kind of getting to the the recreational components of the proposal. The red lines you see and the and the purple lines representing walking trails that would be built and or expanded on the property there. And you can see over here on kind of the right hand side, there's a couple of areas where that would actually tie into the Farum College property and be part of the the Farum College opportunities that are there as well. And this was just a photo of, you know, a potential housing type duplex unit. So you can see here, there's there's an entry door here, and there's an entry door here. So there's there's probably a common wall that's that's kind of running between the middle of these as a duplex unit. The Human Shelter proposal, this development proposal was what I would call is much more fluid, and the applicant would like to work with the county more to really flush that plan out and develop a plan for the housing and and work on that together. And so rather than submitting a plan, a firm plan, their their offer was really, hey, if you go with us on this proposal, we want to sit down and kind of work through what that development layout looks like. There was a sketch, and I'll show you that in just a moment. But I think their main thing would be, you know, we really want to sit down with the county and work through this of what that ultimate development would look like. And that's kind of what speaks to that second bullet there. The applicant was willing to include a mix of housing types from unit size to make, and that could be manufactured modular indoor stick belt. As I mentioned earlier, recreation was not really a proposed part of this proposal, and they really participated anticipated that this would be provided by others. They proposed to develop a portion of the property designated for single family via lot sales and then speculative speculative housing sales. Their phases for the housing development would be driven by demand, approximately seven to 10 lots at a time, and then two to three speculative houses at a time, depending on demand. They requested that the county really give the property to them, or at least allow them to develop the houses on the property without having to pay for the property. They also requested that the county waive permanent fees, cover the cost of extending utilities, and any additional road costs that would be part of the the project development. And again, same as the the previous proposal, they recognize the need for grants and and kind of a partnership with the county to apply for grants for development and housing assistance. Again, just to show you kind of an idea of of one of the housing types proposed here, this was a three bedroom Fleetwood model, about 1,500 square feet. That was part of the proposal package. And then, again, this wasn't a hard fast development plan, but this was one of the options where, you know, off of the main street there that they could develop a a series of units there, these manufactured housing units. And then they subsequently also, if you recall, last fall, Fleetwood has now offered a a new duplex model. And so that was also part of this proposal was that, working with Fleetwood, they would also have that option of providing that that new duplex model, not just the traditional single wide models that that are really kind of shown in this particular example here. So the review committee, the review panel really looked at these. We went through a process of evaluating the proposals. We went through a period where we submitted questions back to each of the responders for additional information and additional clarification about some of the aspects of the proposal. Following those, towards the end of the year, we we scheduled interviews with each group at the beginning of January and had them come and make presentations before the review committee. And then the review committee met and discussed each one of those and came to an agreement as far as a recommendation to the board of supervisors. And that's listed here is that the it's the committee's opinion that neither of these proposals really meet the intended goals of the county and the master plan. And 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 really, a lot of the aspects of the RFP and for the therefore, the committee is really recommending that the board not move forward with either proposal at this time. And as you'll see in your packet, I know there's, you know, over the years, there's been many discussions about, you know, the ultimate disposition of this property and what that looks like. And so what we just added here is just additional considerations is really what we're calling those is, at this point, I think there's several options that the board has in front of them to consider. One, which really, I guess, isn't listed here, is is continuing to dive deeper into either one of these proposals and potentially looking to negotiate with either one of these responders in a in a more aggressive fashion as far as looking at, you know, what those possibilities are and working with either one of the two groups that have responded. Other options would be put out another request for proposals and seek additional responses from developers. We could change the request for proposals. We could ask for different things in the proposals. I think the the slate would be kind of open as far as what that would look like. Another one would just simply be listing the property for sale. If that's the intent of the board, just to put this property back on the tax rolls, then that would be an option, as well as potentially hiring an auction firm to come out and auction the property in whole or in parts. And so a lot of times, the the auction companies will bid those off in smaller pieces, but then, you know, also sell it as a whole. And so that's a something the county could consider. The county could consider working, continuing to work with members of the community like the Friends of Farum Park and the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Department to really look at the feasibility of utilizing this property for a park facility, whether that's a privately owned or whether that's a publicly owned park facility. If that is a desire of the board to create a new facility here or be part of a facility here, I think that's some discussion that probably needs to to occur with the Parks and Rec Commission and the committee. And then if it's something that the county is going to take on as a county sponsored facility, then that certainly should go into CIP and be part of that discussion about capital investment in this in this particular property. And then another additional consideration would be just consider additional opportunities for the county to work directly with a developer builder in conjunction with our partners like West Piedmont and Run Oak Valley Regional Commission and Virginia Housing to generate housing opportunities on the property. And so the state, Virginia Housing, has been going through a program and a process to allocate funding to each of the PDCs for housing initiatives. And so that started last year. The county really wasn't in a position last year to kind of start a project with them to utilize some of that funding, but there is another round of funding that's coming. And in some ways, this property now is in a position where I think it would be prime to utilize some of that funding from either or both of the PDCs. And we've had conversations with both of them about the possibility of that. And so that's another opportunity there as well. And so there's probably other considerations as well, but those were just some of the ones, I think, that have kind of risen to the top as what can considered maybe some of those next steps for the board to consider. And so kind of the final slide here is next steps as far as, okay, I'm happy to answer any comments or questions that the board may have this evening. I will say that there is no action that is necessary by the board this evening. You know, I think we envision this really as this is the presentation of the proposals to you, and this this is the recommendation of the committee. But I think further questions for the board are is what is what is the board's really real desired outcome for this property? Is it a park? Is it housing? Is it just to return it to the tax roll? What is the the real outcome the board wants to see on this property? You you can, as I said, you don't have to take action, but you could take action on these proposals, and then you could also seek additional information and then consideration of other ideas for the future use of the property. So kind of I'll leave it there, and I'll kind of open the floor at your discretion, Mr. Chairman, for any questions or any additional feedback I can provide as to this process.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion. Not going to take any motions right now until we talk about it. So, Mr. Tatum, you've had a comment or question?
Yes, I do. I just want to say, Mr. Sandy, I appreciate the all the work and effort you've put into this process. And I want to see action taken tonight is what I would like to see. Now, according, you know, that's depending largely with our attorney as to what we what we can do as far as we have to keep everything legal and upfront, and we certainly want to do that. But going back over the history of this park, it's been sitting there now for close to 30 years. Nothing has happened with it. It's just been sitting there. It's a beautiful piece of property, and it's it's a shame that it's just just there, not not adding to the community at all, other than a place, you know, that the Farum Ford has taken the initiative over the last several months to get in there and really get the activity stirring in and around that park. You know, I've had some questions from people throughout the community. Some people have asked me, well, do you think that the the Friends of Farum Park can do what they propose to do? And I've had people say, oh, they can't do it. There's no way. Well, those same people told me to my face back in 1996, when I was going door to door through the community, asking people if they would support a fire department in Henry. And I had a bunch of those same people tell me, I never lived long enough to see a fire department in Henry. Well, I got to tell you, I was able to serve as the chief of that fire department for 12 years, and the community of Henry came together and made it happen. Now, these people sitting here today have come together ever since we had the Farum Village Plan meetings back in 2018, 2019. I have seen a resurgence of life to that community that I can't remember seeing. I'm 58 years old, lived there all my life. There is activity going, there is life. There's life in this community. You know, we've we've the whole county, the whole country has come through, you know, COVID over the last couple of years, and it's been devastating to a lot of communities and a lot of families. But the the community of Farum has seen activity and life that is just simply with no other description, it's amazing to see it. And it just it brings a lot of pleasure to me to see this happening and and certain satisfaction to know that I had the privilege of taking part in just a small part of this this activity going on. I'm I'm going on the record to say that I support the Friends of Farum proposal, the Friends of Farum Park proposal. I've looked I've looked at these two proposals as you laid them out here, and I see one proposal as a group of people that live in a community that love their community, that are taking the chance to invest in their community and make it better. And then I see another proposal here that looks like it's someone coming here wanting to make a dime off the county. And so with without drawing this out, and I'm going to leave the floor, leave time for my other colleagues up here to to speak their piece. But I will say that that I support the Friends of Farum Park. I think these people, they live there, it's their home, they're going to take more pride in it. If it fails, they got to live in it. It's that simple. But I don't think it's going to fail. I don't think it can fail because you're seeing people come together in this small community, and I've seen it happen before. People told us, there's no way under the sun we could build a fire department in Henry. We come together meeting in the old Henry School, if any of you know where that's at. It's an old burnt out building right there above the little community of Henry. We had to build a fire in a fireplace because it didn't have any heat, and we were meeting up there, and they said, you never do it. We started knocking on doors, having fundraises. We raised $160,000 in one year. We built that building, never took a penny from the county. And and I see this very same enthusiasm and action right here in these people that have come here today to support this this proposal. There's a lot of faces here I've never seen in a board meeting before. How many have been here are here today for the first time because you support this proposal? Thank you.
Do you want to say yes?
But I just see an opportunity for a community to do for itself, and I think that that's what this board should be promoting. And I I I think that, you know, is it a perfect proposal? We're not going to get a perfect proposal from anybody, but I think they meet the needs of this community. And who who better knows the needs for that community than the people that live there? That that's that's my position, and and I'll leave the floor to to my colleagues.
Anyone else?
Just a question, Steve. So whether you accepted this proposal or one in the future, had you envisioned giving any deed restrictions over, or was it just going to be a clean, no deed restrictions kind of transaction?
I think it would that would depend on the kind of the negotiations of the particular development. It I think it would be, I guess it could be deed restrictions, but it would also be probably more of like a development agreement as well for something like this if we move down that that path. Now, I think if we went the direction of simply just putting it on the market to sell it, I think that would be a discussion we would want to have as a board as well as what deed restrictions would you want to put on it if you just sold it outright? And one of those reasons would be to protect the future uses because there is no zoning on this property. And so I think, I guess the short answer to your question is it depends, you know, which direction the kind of the board goes. And I'd certainly defer to our legal counsel on that, but I think that I think you could do it a couple of different ways, and deed restrictions might be one of those things that you would envision, you know, utilizing before you actually transferred the property.
Thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have supported this group for several months. I find the Friends of Farum Park proposal extremely well done. I don't know who all put this together, but I think the county should hire them for some of our projects. A lot of time and effort went into this, and as a part time resident of Farum, I applaud you all, and I appreciate you all turning out today. I would like to see our board vote on this today and let the Friends of Farum buy this park. Listening to Beth Doughty and I heard our chairman question her about livability and the quality of life, this is a prime example to me of what livability and quality of life It is set vacant for almost 30 years. They're willing to pay the county $200,000 for it. For my vote, I'm willing to let them have it today.
Steve, do you know it was bought in 1996? Do you know what was paid for it by the county then?
I do not. I don't. Krista, you have any recollection? Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that answer for you right now. I think it.
This, we can find that out. We can find out if it's when we need.
Yeah, it'd probably be on the GIS page under the consideration. I'd just have to look at it. I hate I wouldn't want to throw a number out because I don't know for sure.
I wouldn't be against the Friends of Farum Park proposal, but I do, you know, since it's not meeting the specs of what we wanted as far as the housing with it coming in. And Steve, you gave the numbers earlier, one of them being a, the current reassessment value, and one of them being a.
Appraisal.
Appraisal appraisal that was done five, four years ago, or five years ago, whatever.
2021, yeah.
I'm I want the property sold and back on the tax roll, but I would like to see it negotiated back. I'd like to see a better price for it. I don't think it should be sold under the assessed value or the and the assessed value and the appraisal price came in pretty close. I don't think it should be less than that. So I, you know, I'd like to have those conversations and work out some of these details before we make a move like that.
Anyone else got any comment before I make mine? Smith, you got one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, I have a question and then a couple of comments. Did staff formally declare these responses non-responsive as a formality in terms of the response back to the applicants?
No, they were both responsive. I mean, they both met the criteria to submit. They, you know, so they they got it in on time, they did those things, you know, to meet the qualifications of the proposals. What the review panel just as in their review decided was that neither one of them really met the intended goals of the RFP and the master plan for providing that housing component, the mix of housing types, all those other things that were kind of touched on in the master plan. all those other things that were kind of touched on in the master plan as far as what the real, what the real goal was of the, the proposal. So the decision of the panel was that both of those fell short of really meeting those intended goals.
So was the RFP, was it specked out very closely to the master plan? Or was, I, I don't recall seeing the-
Correct, yeah. Yeah, a lot of it was based on a proposal that would, maybe I'll use the word mimic, but not, I mean, you didn't, there was flexibility built in. So you didn't have to provide, you know, back to that plan I showed you earlier of like 200 units. Never said you had to provide a minimum number of units or anything like that. But looking for a proposal that showed a variety of housing types, you know, kind of showed how it would be developed in those different land bays, how it would be integrated, how there would be open space within there, those sorts of aspects of the proposal of the master plan were all anticipated to be part of any proposal.
So is there language in the RFP that gives the board direction as to whether we have to accept disregard? What is the language that's there?
There's language that says the board can, can accept any of the proposals or the board could choose not to accept any of the-
Is that based on a process that we would have to incur?
There are, you know, there are some general criteria and qualifications in the proposal that, you know, that, that we would want to look at and be able to specifically evaluate each one of them against those-
So if the board was to prefer to go one way or the other with the two applicants that we have, is it fair to say that we'd have to do some due diligence as a board to answer some questions about evaluation of these proposals?
I'll, I'll defer to the attorney, but I believe yes, that, you know, especially if you were going to accept one over the other, I think you would want to show that this one kind of ranked, if I can use that term loosely, ranked higher or scored better, if you will, than the other proposal.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions. I would like to weigh in. This has been something that I've studied very closely. And I've read the entire proposal. I had the privilege of talking with Mr. Saunders yesterday evening. And we had probably an hour, hour and a half long conversation. I had an opportunity to ask a host of questions. And I won't reiterate those in this forum. I am very supportive of Fair, the Friends of Faram, having this property and getting a- I, I would echo some of the remarks of my colleagues so far. This is a somewhat unprecedented effort in my 30-plus years' experience in dealing with planning and zoning. And it's quite remarkable to see the skin in the game, if you will. You know, we, we do RFPs. We expect to get maybe four to six proposals from builders and developers. We have two nonprofits that's submitting, you know, with this round. But you guys have demonstrated professionalism. You've demonstrated commitment. And you've demonstrated that, and I clearly see that you all aren't going to settle for anything less than accomplishment and fulfillment of the goals that you've put forward. In my estimation, if anybody has, you know, the interest for you guys, it's you guys, right? That you all would make sure that the community that you want it to be and that you're investing in and willing to work on, actually roll your sleeves up and work in a time that we are losing volunteers in many, many regards across this county. And we have this group that's willing to roll their sleeves up and step up in numbers. And I, I don't think that there could be a better case for livability, if you will, in terms of quality of life in the Faram District. And so for the supportive remarks that my colleagues have expressed, again, I support awarding this to the Friends of Faram. And I would place a caveat that we would seek some legal advice perhaps. I know we have a closed session today, but to understand if there are any intricacies that we need to understand as a board in terms of making sure that the wishes of the board are, are granted and fulfilled, but we're doing it, you know, legally and appropriately.
Ladies and gentlemen-
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Everything you've done, you know, put a lot of work in this. And I agree with the rest of my colleagues. Y'all, the community has put a lot of work in this. And it looks like a lot of enthusiasm. I'm sure it's going to continue. But I do agree with Mr. Mitchell that we need to look at the price of it and get it at now selling price it back at the assessed value. If we don't, we're going to catch a lot of flack with the new assessments we got out here now. And I don't need any more. So I'm sure the rest of us don't. But I would suggest, you know, going forward with the Friends of Faram, but also sitting down and trying to negotiate and get a reasonable price out of it to meet today's assessments.
Did, did you have another comment? Anybody else? Okay. I've heard several things here today. The two proposals that have been presented, as they are presented, the most, to me, the most favorable is the Friends of Faram. But we have, I've heard it from the other members and for myself, we've got some questions that have to be answered in regards to the proposals and to the value and how we want to move forward. So with that being said, according to the rules of our board procedures, we're going to have to conclude before we make any kind of decision. And whether that decision is made today or not is yet to be heard. But we're going to have to go in closed session and talk with our attorney about a couple of things in regards to the proposals that were there that have been made. And these can only be done in a closed session because it deals with contracts. And then at that point, we will have to come back out and go from there on what goes on from that. So we will conclude this in closed session in just a moment. So with that being said, we'll move, we'll go forward with that. We have, I'm not sure if we're going to have time to do this. We may have to go on and take it up afterwards. And probably our closed session is going to end up being done after we have a public comment. Because that's at 6 o'clock. We do not have any public hearings today, but we will have to do that. I understand that our attorney has something that he needs to talk to the board and it has to do with a court case in Augusta County that could be beneficial of interest to this board. Do we have time to do that? We've got to, we've got 30 minutes here before we go into our public hearings. I mean, not our, our public comments. And we've got a couple of other things to do. And then, do we have time to do that? Or would you prefer to come back and we could do that at the beginning of 6 o'clock?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, in my profession, I generally tend to talk as long as I'm allowed. Therefore, you tell me how long I've got. I'll be glad to shorten it to that.
I'm not going to put a time limit. I tell you what, this-
About five minutes, I think, probably could take care of.
If you can take care of it in five minutes, please proceed. It's, it's my understanding that what you were talking about, the Augusta County court case is very important. And I think it needs to be, our board needs to be aware of it.
It, it is, Mr. Chairman, for a number of reasons. There was a situation that, that occurred and it started last year in Augusta County where a member of the Board of Supervisors was secretly recording closed meetings of the board. The were, and, and it became really acute because on one night they were discussing a very, very sensitive employment matter with regard to one of the employees of the county being accused of, I can't remember what it was, but it was sensitive enough to where they thought it should be in closed meeting. And then they found out that he had recorded those. And then, and this part of it luckily is not something that I would ever worry about with this board. There was a bit of a fracture and he started threatening to release the recordings and this, that and the other. So the, the board had to file a suit. They ended up in a lawsuit basically for, for two reasons. One, they had requested under FOIA that he provide the recording to them. And the other was to make sure that everybody understood that the recording was actually the board as a whole's property. And the, the judge ruled that he could turn to make the tape public, which would have created a problem, as you can imagine, from a privacy standpoint and the like. And also that the board did not, because he was a member of the board, the board did not necessarily own the tape itself, even though he was doing that then. And I think the point of the case and the thing to always keep in mind is to value and, and give the correct respect to the topics that are discussed in a closed meeting. In particular, nobody who works for the county would want to have their employment matters discussed in public, much less recorded, that sort of thing. So I would just caution all of you to make sure, you know, of two things. One, we don't record, I know we don't record closed meetings, so that part doesn't bother me. But the other is to keep in mind the purpose and why we go into a closed meeting. And it's not so that, you know, the next day you can tell everybody what happened in the closed meeting because it's going to end up in a situation where we end up embarrassing somebody or violating their privacy if we did that. And we just simply wouldn't want that to happen. Since I had heard about the Augusta case, the United States Supreme Court this week decided a case that is of interest to folks, especially folks who are governmental, both employees and representatives regarding social media. And in that decision, the court said they could not put down a blanket rule that on your Facebook pages, if you have them, as either, and in this case, it was a county administrator, I'm not picking on Chris when I say it, but it was a county administrator who on his personal Facebook page, which the guy was to read the description and the opinion, it's great. He was a prolific poster to his own page and had pictures. You know, he would put up 30 or 40 pictures a day of his daughter and his dog and his wife and everything else. And then he would also include county information. Well, the guy responded to the county information in a way that he didn't like. So he, I guess he deleted the posts and then he banned the guy from posting, et cetera. I don't do Facebook, so I don't know. But anyway, prohibited him from face, from posting. And he said, well, that's a First Amendment violation because I'm not, this is a public forum and I don't have a, you know, I'm not being allowed to comment. And the court came down and said, it's a case by case analysis and you have to look at a number of different factors. One of which is whether or not what you're posting is something that it would be expected in your job or as part of your job. So the, the lesson out of it was you probably want to keep your personal Facebook pages separate from your political or governmental Facebook pages. Because if you start mixing the two, then you're liable to have people saying less than nice things about you that'll be posted on your, your personal pages as opposed, and you can't do anything about it compared to your political page. So I would caution, if you only have one going right now, and again, since I've never been on Facebook in my life, I have no idea what you, what you have going. But if you do, make sure that you've got it split. And make sure that on your personal page that you, somewhere you put, maybe at the bottom or whatever, something that has a disclaimer that this has anything to do with the government, that this is your personal page. And just because you're a member of the Board of Supervisors or the county administrator or the assistant county administrator or whatever, that it's simply your personal page. And, and we should be able to avoid any of those types of issues going forward. So those were just the two cases that I had hoped to be able to share with the board. I know there were a couple of other questions that county administrator had, but those can be another time.
Take care of them later.
Yes.
Was the Augusta, was the Augusta court case settled?
No, no, it's appealed.
Oh, it's appealed.
They're appealing it to the Virginia Court of Appeals. And only because this sort of thing interests me. And I don't want to bore you, but in most cases when there's an appeal, you put up a bond. Well, they're trying to figure out how you put up a bond to keep from having to turn over the, the recording that you're trying to get the court to say, you don't have to turn over. So there's a, anyway, that kind of procedure stuff is wonky enough to where I get interested in it. But that's, that's where we are on that.
For that lesson that you guessed, gave us is why, and I'll, I'll say that to the public that's out there, that I do not answer emails. I don't have a Facebook page. I'll talk to you all day long on the telephone. If you give me your phone number, we'll call back. And my phone is posted in the county website, my home phone. I'm not, I'm not talking to nobody on it. And that's why, that's why, right there. All right, now, we've got 15, well, about 40 minutes, 20 minutes, because we got to be back here at 6. Madam Clerk, is B75 available for a closed session or?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll go, we'll, Mr. Tatum, if you'll read yours, we'll go to B75 for our closed session. And we'll be back for a public comment at 6 o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, et cetera. A3, discussion of acquisition of real property or disposition of real property. A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry. A7, consultation with legal counsel or briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters required, requiring legal advice. A29, discussion of the terms of a contract. And all this is of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Mr. Wynn, that will cover what he just proposed, cover us for the-
Yes. The discussion on procurement law.
Yes, sir. I need a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
B75, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we've got some board appointments that we need to take care of. Quinn, I think you have one for the Piedmont County Commission?
Yes. So go ahead. Yes, sir. Okay. So I'd like to recommend that we appoint Caressa Morgan to the board for Piedmont Community Services. And just a little bit about her, she lives in Glade Hill. She currently works in the healthcare industry. She, her title is Transitional Care Coordinator, but in layman's terms, she does a case management within the healthcare industry. So she has a lot of technical experience. It fits very well with Piedmont Community Services. And I think she'd be a great board member for that group.
You making that as a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signature, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So moved. Anyone else have any? All right, seeing none? Seeing none? We have no, we have no, so all we got tonight is a public comment. We don't have any of the planning commission here to do anything, so. I guess I need to turn my mic on. Y'all can't hear me. Is that better? That, that makes it gooder when I do that. All right, so we'll go into public comment at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. We now move on in to our public comment period. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or enwriters on matters appropriate and responsible to the board. Each speech speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attack or insulting, profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment- Public comment is not a question-and-answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chairman will rule the speaker out of order, and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. It will be a strict three-minute, there will be a light that comes on at 15 seconds, and then at, at the end of the three minutes, a red light comes on and a buzzer starts. And I'm sorry, but before, if everybody in here, we're going to be here till midnight as it is, so, but everybody will get their time. If you haven't signed up, you need to sign up with Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, will you be so kind as to call the first name, please?
Kay Thompson.
Please come forth, state your name and address for the record.
Kay Thompson, and I live in Warts, Virginia.
Address, please, ma'am.
116 Taylor's Ridge Road.
Thank you.
No relation to you.
No, ma'am.
This is going to be really hard for three minutes, so I do have a flyer that people can email me to get all the information. I'm really, really, really unhappy with this reassessment. I took your own percentage change per neighborhood, and I took out all the house, the unimproved land, which is 0% in the last four years went up, and your percentage rate jumps, like Boone's Mill from 22% to 32%, Rocky Mount 34% to 62%, Union Hall is 54%, Boone is 48%, Blue Ridge is 50%. And then you say that the land didn't go up. We have, I have a double wide trailer next door to me on less than three acres, and by your assessment, it should be going for $400,000. And it was, it's like, where did you come from? I looked at the growth in the United States, the highest was year '21 to '22 at 18%. Your own solid waste management program says 7% per year in the next 30 years. Your own '23-'24 budget says that the growth of the real estate is only .65, and yet you raise everything over 50%. It's not justified. When you look at the houses, you did 74 neighborhoods, and you're supposed to take those houses and do the sales that were in there, and you didn't, because there wasn't enough to justify going up to 50, 60%. So you'd grab this house down here that sold over 100% of its assessment and bring it up here. You did that continuously, two times, three times, one house is 13 times. It wasn't in 13 different neighborhoods. So the whole assessment that you're bringing up here is hurting a lot of people, they can't afford those taxes, not even at 4.5%. On top of it, there's a lot of things, I'm running out of time. There's a lot of things with the budget that I really think that you need to look at. Some of the figures that you use, you go back to 2006 to justify what you're trying to get. That's 18 years ago. How about we just do the last two, three years and figure it out from there? We only lost 49 students, 49, not 1,500. It was 1,500 from 2006. That's 18 years ago. Why are we closing two schools? Why are we closing two schools when you've got $20 million in CDs sitting there that were surplus?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Marvin Fink?
Good afternoon.
I know what you said in the beginning.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Marvin Fink, I live at 25251 Virgil Goode Highway, Boone's Mill, Virginia.
Thank you.
You claim y'all don't answer questions, but I do think, from my understanding, you guys are all elected officials, correct? And I think all of you need to be replaced. This young, this lady, just, she's on mark. I've worked hard all my life, coached in this county for 12 years, not one time did a kid ever have to pay to play sports. Now they have to. Now I have to make a choice for my own family, whether I buy medicine for my wife for the month, or food for my family. My mortgage went up $81 because of this little circus act y'all got going on raising the taxes. And she's right. Y'all are, y'all went well above where you were, I mean, you just made yourselves look like a bunch of fools is what you did. Because there's companies out here, I got a buddy that owns a business in Rocky Mount, his taxes in his company alone went up $8,000. His home mortgage, I don't even want to touch it compared to what I did. I'm complaining about $81 a month. But when you live on a fixed income, you're strapped to that, there's nothing you can do to fix it. And from my understanding, Mr. Thompson, you're in my district. You should have looked around you and seen what lives in your district. They're not young, healthy, working employees, most of us are retired on a budget. All you did was stick a knife in our back, and I'm appalled. And so I will yield what left of my time with you, knowing I'm going to run against you for your seat. Have a nice night.
Good evening, John Shank, 1357 Riverbend Drive in Rocky Mount, Virginia. I'm here to talk about the Friends Affair and Proposal. I have this big, long, item-bulletized list that I was going to tell you about, but I don't have to. I've been in business 40 years, and when you give somebody ownership and responsibility, they're going to succeed. Look at these people out here today. They've got skin in the game to steal, to steal Mr. Tatum's line, he stole my thunder. But when you have skin in the game, and you make people responsible, and they want to succeed, they want to make sure that where they're in that group of peers, that they're going to succeed. And you, you look at both proposals. The Friends Affair and Proposal was top-notch, absolutely top-notch. I have not seen anything like that in a while. So I'm here to tell you, be leaders, let's get Friends Affair off the ground, let's get this project going. I know it's going to take time, but in the long run, this community will be better off for it. Thank you.
Three minutes goes fast. Thanks for the opportunity for letting me speak.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Moore, and my wife and I live on the lake in the Gills Creek District.
Got an address, sir?
I beg your pardon?
Address, please.
125 Oaklawn Drive.
Thank you, sir.
We completed our home in 2018, it's a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath house. We live in a nice neighborhood. The proposed reassessment for 2024 is $242,000 for the property, the land, we paid 125. $839,300 was the previous assessment, our house was 600. We now are looking at $1,081,300. Now, I know we're not going to pay the full tax on that, because it's always been on a percentage, but it leaves the door open for you to continue to raise and tell me how lucky I am, because we're not up, we're not charging for you for a million bucks. So you'll never change that ridiculous assessment. That's the problem with the numbers. The assessors drive down to the top of the hill, take three or four pictures, and they go back and look at the taxes, and they look at the sale prices that the realtors created. This is an anomaly called COVID. We had five homes sell on our Little Cove during COVID. Most of them, four of them came from Washington DC, paid cash, they don't live here, it's their summer home now. So the numbers never change once you pump them way up over like this. You'll always be coming around and saying, you're not, you don't pay full value. So the, the message seems to be fair market value. Well, fair market value is what the buyer is willing to sell for, and the seller's willing to accept. And this is the anomaly, the realtors pump this money up. 6% of a million dollars is $60,000 to the realtor. Why wouldn't they go to someone and say, I have a house you really should look at? And then they're telling the seller, you know, you're not, you don't have this listed right. And this is what's been happening. And the assessors are looking at the tax money. The prices, the price markets and the assessors merely look up the sales prices and use that as a base for an area. You call it fair market value. If because of the upcoming elections, inflation, possibly world war, my house decreases and I can't even unload it, will you lower my taxes in four years? Will you say we're sorry? Will you give me my money back? Nope. It's going to stay at over a million, because that's what the assessor said. It's not fair. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Howard Muzel, I live at 8445 Borkert T. Washington Highway, Warts, Virginia. I am not a resident from here originally, I grew up in a place called Minnesota. And much to my surprise, during that time, I ended up on the Board of Education for 12 years. Now, I did terrible in school, so the teachers didn't like me. I wasn't put there because people liked me. I was put there because the board had done what you're doing now. And that year, three new people came on the board, and I was one of those. Now, I didn't want to be on the board. My father had been very, very active in political stuff, and they wanted him to run, but his health was bad. So my brother and I drew straws as to see who would run, and I lost. I stayed on the board for 12 years, and what I learned was, we had a good school system, not because of the board, and not because of the state, but because of the teachers. And we did build $53 million worth of stuff while I was on the board, $53 million worth of building improvements, junior high, senior high, and this was back in the 80s and 90s. Now, in Minnesota, you can't just, the board can't just say, I'm going to build a building. You have to sell it to the public, and you have to convince them to raise their taxes. That's a tough sell. I was in sales for many years, and that's the toughest sell there is. But we did it, not by sales techniques, but by being honest, being open, and explaining to people. And I don't care how many times you've been, had things explained to you, and how well you know it, take time to tell the people over and over again, because then it will make a difference. Now, I have one thing I want to read to you, it is your mission statement. Our mission is to provide services and leadership in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Franklin County, and to promote an outstanding quality of life. We will balance the needs and desires of the public with available resources while administering policies and ordinances in a fair and courteous manner. We will protect our community and environment, preserve our heritage, and anticipate future needs, demands, and opportunities. Thank you very much.
Good evening. How's that, is that good?
Good.
Okay. I'm Shannon Brooks, my address is 1680 Stanford Road, Union Hall, Virginia. I am a teacher with Franklin County Public Schools with 17 years' experience, all of them with Franklin County Schools, and I am here tonight to ask the county to please maintain the progress we have made towards retaining our most skilled teachers by supporting the school budget as proposed, specifically the additional funds to implement year two of the Teachers Step Restoration Plan. A year ago, I came before this body to share my concern about the fact that we were hemorrhaging teachers, with our best and brightest leaving to the county to go work for other divisions that paid better. I explained how we had lost more than 200 teachers who had endured seven years of pay freezes, and more and more were finding it impossible to continue to sacrifice their own family's prosperity for other people's children. The county and division responded admirably. They found funds to implement year one of a step restoration plan and began to make county teachers whole. It worked. Last year, the division saw a marked decrease in the number of veteran teachers leaving the division at the end of the year to go elsewhere. The move didn't just raise salaries in Franklin County for its most skilled teachers, it restored our faith in the division and in the county. Teachers felt heard and valued in a way that they hadn't since well before the pandemic. When school resumed this past August, the difference in your teaching staff was notable. Teachers returned with revitalized purpose and energy. They felt more positive about their work and their future with the county in general. The restored steps eased financial pressures for families that desperately needed it. After-school hours that had been gobbled up by second jobs and side hustles could now be devoted to classroom needs, like planning and grading, and student needs, like coaching and tutoring. Restoring even a portion of our steps paid dividends in dollars, to be sure, but also in time, in energy, goodwill, optimism, and dignity. We've made strides since last spring, to be sure, but we've only taken that first step. Your teachers watched anxiously then to see if the county and division meant what they said about the importance of attracting and retaining quality teachers as part of a quality school system. Your actions indicated you did mean it. The question now is, do you still mean it? If you do, please support this budget and continue the effort of making us all whole.
Hello, my name is Ellen McCullen, I am a teacher at the high school, although I do not live in Franklin County. I am a 23-
State your address, ma'am, for the record.
3339 Forest Court, Roanoke.
Board, she does not live in Franklin County, you want to give her the three minutes or no?
She taught me in high school, I listened to her.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm sorry. All right, I'm a 23-year veteran teacher for the Franklin County Public Schools. Franklin County took a chance on me, just like you just did, in 2001, and I took a chance on Franklin County. One of the deciding factors in my choice to teach in Franklin County was the salary schedule. It was, at least on paper, enough to convince me to sign up. I am also one of the many teachers caught in the seven years of frozen salaries who is still teaching. So what does that mean for me? For one, it means I have lost thousands of dollars in terms of my salary over the years, but I've also lost out on higher contributions to my Virginia retirement. In addition, I have found it necessary to work a seventh, second job- In addition, I have found it necessary to work a seventh, second job every single year since starting my teaching career. Juggling a second job while working a demanding full-time job is not ideal, and it sets up the possibility for burnout. Last year, with the step one of the salary compensation in place, all teachers received a rate. However, it's important to note that a number of teachers held on for at least another year in hopes of finally being put on their correct step in the upcoming year two of the salary compensation. So, what will happen if year two is not funded? I don't have a crystal ball, but according to my evidence firsthand, many of those teachers will move off the fence and go to other school systems, if not leave teaching altogether. Just today, I had a conversation with one of our younger teachers who was leaving us to go to Roanoke County. The reason? His salary. Consistent funding for the Franklin County Public School System and its employees will go a long way in keeping teachers in the county. This is also about keeping young people and families in Franklin County. As you well know, families choose to live in places with a strong local school system. We want young people to stay here or come back here to work while raising their families. One thing I am personally proud of is the number of my former students who have come back to Franklin County to teach in the school system. However, young teachers may look at our salary scale and the previous frozen years and decide that Franklin County is not their best option. Let's give those young people a reason not only to teach in Franklin County, but also to stay in Franklin County. I urge the Board of Supervisors to allocate the needed funding for the Franklin County Public Schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Heather Owen.
Heather Owen, 634 Heather Ridge Drive, Rocky Mountain. Good evening. I am speaking on behalf of my fellow Franklin County educators in hopes that you will support funding for the school's budget as written. I've been teaching in the system for 18 years. When I graduated from college, there were two reasons I wanted to teach here. One, loyalty. I wanted to return to teach in my home county. And two, they had a 10-step pay scale. Since then, the scale has been extended twice, and I have been frozen six times. My husband has told me time and time again that I should leave, that I should go to Roanoke, like so many others, where I will be compensated better. So, why have I stayed? Two reasons. Loyalty and my children. My children went to a babysitter five minutes from my school. Now, one attends the school that I teach at, and the other is still five minutes away. And as a mama, this closeness means comfort. My children, however, continue to grow and won't need mom as much as they once did. And loyalty, well, usually that goes both ways. Many of us have been loyal to this county and the children that we love and serve here, but has the county been loyal to us? I've been Teacher of the Year twice, at two different levels. I pride myself in continually learning how to best serve the children of this county and their ever-growing needs. How have I been compensated for my many, many hours working beyond my contract? A loss of at least $50,000. I never actually did the math myself. I did not want to know, and honestly, I didn't want to give my husband more ammunition in his arsenal of reasons why I shouldn't stay here, so please don't tell him. I want to say that number again, though. $50,000. I hadn't even reached that amount on the pay scale till this year. Want to know how much I still owe on my van? $10,000. Could have paid that off. Could have put more towards my kids' college fund. Could have taken them on that Disney vacation they see their friends going on. I kind of see my husband's point a little better now. It's not just that I haven't been compensated accordingly, but my family has sacrificed as well. This year, I am on step six of the new 20-step scale. Again, I have 18 years in, and I'm on step six. This hardly seems fair. I know many are upset about the school closures, and believe me, we are not in the interest of closing schools. However, we are in the interest of providing a good education, and this county needs good teachers in order to do that. I've seen many excellent veteran teachers leave, many of them also being Teachers of the Year. It is time that this board not just see the budget as a presentation from the school board, or see it simply as numbers on a piece of paper, but to look at the people, it not just directly affects, but the larger impact it has on the county, the county's children, and our future. Thank you.
Tim and Kim Shelton.
Are you, are y'all doing this together, or?
It's separate.
All right.
Do you want me to insert?
Please.
She's got a printed, we tried to send y'all a, or send her a slideshow of what we were talking about, going on in our neighborhood, but it didn't work. So, we have a printed copy. She's going to pass it out to you.
Okay.
My name's Tim Shelton. I live at 111 Bridalane, Hardy, Virginia. I'm a current resident of Franklin County, a current resident and business owner of Franklin County. I've been here for 24 years, and I come before you, come before you today with concerns regarding the sanctity of our neighborhood and other R1 communities in the county. Currently, our neighborhood is classified as R1. Manufactured homes and mobile homes are not allowed in that restriction. My goal here today is to address the classification of what is a tiny home. The distinct correlation, that of a manufactured mobile home in addition to what makes a home mobile. The pictures you see being passed around are what's in our backyard. The pictures that are beside the sheds in the picture are the houses that are in our neighborhood now. The neighborhood was built in 1974. The latest house was built in 2019. And, almost a year ago, those sheds showed up in our backyard, and the people are attempting to build them into tiny homes. The county shut it down, the planning and zoning shut it down of having two dwellings on one lot. So, now, I think the plan is they're going to put two sheds together and make one house. That's rumor. I don't know that to be fact, but they're jumping through the hoops and going through the process of trying to live in these sheds and call them a tiny home. Ms. Cooper has assured me that a tiny home, once it meets building codes and all the, all the classifications of a stick-built home, that it'll be a home. But there's two distinct things, there's way more than two, but I have two distinct things that can prove that these still are mobile homes, and this is Franklin County code. One, a meter base can't be attached to a mobile home, and it can't be attached to a tiny home. It has to be placed on poles outside of the building, as to not be jerked out of the ground or pull the wiring off the poles or whatever. That means it's still considered a mobile home. The foundation is called an engineered foundation. I had a building inspector explain to me in detail what an engineered foundation was, and after he explained it to me, I asked him what the difference in the engineered foundation for a tiny home was compared to a single-wide trailer, and he said, "None, just smaller." So, I'm asking you guys if there's anything that y'all can do to change the classification of a tiny home to a mobile home. I'm all ears. Can somebody contact me outside of this meeting and help with the process or start a process of your own? Because you can see in the pictures there, that's, that's what we're up against. And listening to some of the other speakers that were here tonight, talking about attracting new businesses and attracting things like that, you find out, if they find out that that's allowed in an R1 neighborhood, do you think they're going to come to Franklin County to live or build a house? Thank you.
Kathy Champray.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Kim Shelton, 111 Bridalane. I'm here to express the concerns of the residents of our neighborhood that are directly impacted by the sheds that have been placed at 63 Saddle Drive. As you can see from the papers that are being presented, each home in the neighborhood has been built to standard that are consistent with each other and follow the guidelines for an R1 zone. Purposes per Franklin County is to provide for single-family detached residential development that are normally compatible with the residential surroundings. These regulations are designed to maintain neighborhood stability. In reference to some of the topics that you guys heard tonight, we heard them mention livability, sanctity, preservation of communities now and in the future. These sheds in our backyards do not promote the current standards of the residents in our community, nor those that may want to move to Franklin County. Just looking at those pictures, imagine if these were in your backyard. And explain how you can turn a shed, when it was manufactured as for that purpose, to become a home. Per the county, the only zones where manufactured homes are permitted are A1, agricultural R2, residential suburban division RC1, residential combined subdivision, not R1. It also states that sheds are considered an accessory structure, and they were built for that purpose, not on-site. They were brought in on a trailer and placed there and are currently sitting on cinder blocks. All approvals so far that we have been informed of are on the implication that it will become a single-family dwelling. I would also like to add that upon the arrival of the applicant, there has been several instances of disrespect to myself, being referred to as "a bitchy neighbor," that's a quote, "in the presence of many of the planning and zoning officials that came out to inspect the property that was stated to me in front of them." These are the residents that are attempting to become part of our current community. Threats have been made to my husband that included physical contact, damage to our existing community, which we pay for because it is not a state-maintained road. The residents in our community provide money to maintain the sanctity of our community right now, and they are already destructing our property. We're asking you to please step in and prevent this from continuing.
Kathy Champray.
Hi. My name's Kathy Champney. My husband and I have a farm at 4561 Booker T. Washington Highway in Rocky Mountain. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Farum Forward and Friends of Farum Park Plan. I will speak to the economic impact that our proposal will have on Franklin County. Most of you know how successful the Farum farmers market has been, but did you realize that it has doubled in size just in the last year? This year's market has over 40 vendors signed up, 40 small businesses, and they're not all just from Farum. Like me, they live in other districts, at least five of the seven districts that y'all represent. Both vendors and community members have actively requested this location on Route 40 after last year's evening markets were held there. The location offers shade and ample parking. Our park plan will bring tourism dollars to Franklin County. The events we can have there will make Farum a more desirable place to visit, work, and live. And while we know that the Development Department's objective is to maximize housing on this property, we hope that you will take into consideration the economic impact and benefits of increasing tourism to the western side of the county. Fun fact, our haunted trail last Halloween brought many people into Franklin County that are not from this area, from areas beyond our borders, and also provided local children a fun and safe place to trick-or-treat. As a nonprofit, this project will allow us to apply for grants that could easily bring in hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, of investment into Farum. Our nonprofits have multiple members with decades of grant-writing experience who are ready and willing to write the grants needed to make this project successful without burdening the county's limited resources. All that grant money would go towards amenities and improvements for the community, as we are an all-volunteer organization. We're not being paid for this. Our volunteer, we volunteer our time for a better community. Based on our plan, we qualify for a variety of grants, including opportunities to reduce the cost of housing for buyers, trail improvements, a farmer's market pavilion, a playground, and more. Again, we have the unique opportunity as a nonprofit to bring these amenities to Franklin County at no cost to taxpayers. And based on our calculations, using current assessment rates, our housing plan would bring in over double the amount of property tax revenue than the neighboring high-dollar subdivision of Shanley's Loop. We strongly believe that our price point will attract buyers and provide sizable tax income to this county while not impacting Farum's rural character. Our plan is about investing in the community. We're offering the county $200,000 for the 62 acres that are developable, even though it's a larger plot. In addition, we will cover all the expenses associated with infrastructure, housing, and amenities at no cost to the taxpayers of Franklin County. It's been 30 years. Just vote yes to the Friends of Farum Park Plan and let us get to work. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Ed Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Farum, Virginia. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Friends of Farum Park and Farum Forward nonprofit groups, and I'd like to explain more about the housing aspect of our proposal and what influenced those decisions. Feedback given during the community meetings cited in the Farum Village Plan repeatedly stated that most of the folks there wanted an age-in-place option. That was repeated in every survey taken by Franklin County staff since 2018. The feedback aligns with the Franklin County Housing Needs Assessment as well, which states that between 2020 and 2025, the largest increase in both markets, Farum and Franklin County, is expected to occur among households ages, households ages 65-plus. The housing study also states from the most growth will occur in one- and two-person households. Age-in-place downsizing solutions free up larger homes and acreage that attract younger buyers who want to live in a rural community. The county's plan encourages high-density housing in an area with limited amenities, making homes less attractive to buyers. Our plan not only provides housing, but amenities that will attract potential homeowners. It's also important to note that our community has shared concerns about the increase in crime, traffic, the stress on community infrastructure, and a high-density subdivision were put on the property. With this data and additional feedback from our community that confirmed the data, we set the parameters of what we needed. We needed a single, a single-level home that provide options with those, with mobility challenges, a smaller home and a lot that's easier to maintain and upkeep, a quality-built two-bed, two-bath home that would retain its value. Per the Farum parcel, I'm sorry, Farum Parcel Master Plan, the average salary in Farum is $54,000 per year, so we set our target price point at between 150 and 160. We met with Nationwide Homes in Martinsville. Several people recommended them as a really quality builder in the area. They build modular homes, which, to the point that was just made, they are not mobile homes. They are high-quality stick-built homes, and the quality exceeds that of most of the stick builders around here. One of the things that we were discussing with Nationwide was our project. And in doing that, Donna Ehern talked about the Five Points Project in Martinsville. Essentially, it is very much, almost the exact same model that we're looking to use to set the price at almost exactly what we're looking to set. So, there's a reference there for us to utilize. In addition to that, the Farum Parcel Master Plan states that any single project developed in Farum could not exceed 40 units due to limited demand. So, that is what we went with. Our max number of houses is 40 units. Given the comprehensive nature of our plan and the fact that we are offering to provide versatile owner-occupied housing options, our group does not understand the Development Department's statement that our proposal doesn't meet the needs of the Farum Parcel Master Plan. We feel strongly that our housing will be safe, affordable, highly desirable, and community-supported, as you can see. Thank you.
Jenny West.
Jenny West, 2839 Beach Mountain Road, Farum. I'm-
I'm here today speaking on behalf of these two nonprofit groups. Friends of Farum Park is a sister organization of Farum Forward, created to quickly provide a community-driven response to the Farum Parcel Master Plan. Both groups work together for the betterment of Farum and ultimately Franklin County. There's been some concern expressed that our nonprofit groups are untested or have not adequately proven ourselves capable of fulfilling the goals of the Friends of Farum Park proposal. As Chair of Farum Forward and a member of Friends of Farum Park, I can tell you that is absolutely not true. Over the last year, we built a network of skilled individuals willing to donate, hear that word, donate, their time to this project to be successful. Our plan has professional support from folks who are knowledgeable and skilled. We have realtors, engineers, farmers, artists, musicians, contractors, teachers, mechanics, lawyers, counselors, business owners, professors, paralegals, plus so many more skilled people. Many of them have already spent countless hours advising us on this project. This plan is rooted in the community, created from the feedback of hundreds of residents, the majority of whom have signed up to help in any way they can because this project means so much to them. From the President of Nationwide Housing, who will help facilitate the aspects of the building of housing, to retired Farum College professors Bob Polat and Dave Johnson, who will be making sure our improvements don't negatively impact the environment, to Reba Dillon, who has decades of experience working with Franklin County Parks and Rec and will be helping us with all planned park amenities, we have the skilled help that we need. Over the last three years, the county has repeatedly cited Farum Forward as a great example of what other community groups should be. Everything we have accomplished is thanks to the support of all the people in our community and the hard work they have put in to make it successful. Our community wants and deserves the public space to gather. We are passionately committed to making it happen. We have proven time and again that when the community of Farum puts its collective effort behind something, we are capable of anything we set our minds to. This project is no different. When you discuss what we should pay for this property, I want you to keep in mind the economic value of what we will be doing. Vote yes and let us keep working.
I'm David Johnson. I live at 1815 Farum Mountain Road in Farum, Virginia.
Johnson, will you talk into the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
Well, as you can gather, I'm also here to speak on behalf of Farum Forward and Friends of Farum Park. I taught chemistry and environmental science at Farum College for thirty-six years and administered close to a million dollars in cost-share funding for ag B and P's in Franklin County, and have been studying at Smith Mountain Lake since 1985. We propose to develop and protect the eighty-four-acre parcel we call Farum Park. The larger of two creeks that combine to form Story Creek originates in the park. The wetland and many springs feed the creek that then flows under Route 40 and joins the second creek just below Titmus Farm. Story Creek then runs behind Farum Elementary through the BRI Farm where USDA-equipped cost-sharing was used to restore the risperium buffer. Story Creek is a major tributary of Pig River, and some of Story Creek ends up in Smith Mountain Lake because of the pump-back system. We want to make sure that Story Creek gets off to a good, clean start. The best way to protect stream water quality is to maximize forest cover and minimize wetland disturbance. Intense residential development would make that difficult. If conservation is not fundamental to the plan, many trees will be removed, destroying habitat and increasing soil erosion, stream siltation, and lake sedimentation. Most developers would consider the restrictions imposed by the environmental site assessment and wetlands compliance as obstacles, but we see them as opportunities. Funding is available to protect source water and develop a wetland demonstration project, creating additional opportunity for working with Farum College and reducing Route 40 flooding when Story Creek jumps its banks. Our children and grandchildren won't know what a hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak tree looks like if we don't protect them. Our plan prioritizes preservation and provides sorely-needed social amenities and affordable housing. It serves the community and future generations by preserving the natural beauty that we deeply care about. I really appreciate the support that I've heard voiced here tonight for the project. I urge you to vote unanimously to support that project and we'll get to work. Thank you.
Tina Hanlon, 209 Arthur Circle in Farum. I've taught at Farum College for over thirty-one years. I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Farum Park and Farum Forward nonprofit groups. I want to stress how the Friends of Farum Park project will benefit not only the community, but Farum College as well. Our plan provides housing that would be an attainable price point for both professors and staff at the college. We can make housing attainable because a nonprofit can reduce the price through grants and fundraising. The Friends of Farum Park Plan provides multiple opportunities to work with Farum College that would support and encourage the growth of both organizations. Friends of Farum Park has already given internship opportunities to college students working in the outdoor recreation and environmental science majors, and currently has an intern working on planning the trail system for the park portion of our proposal. Additionally, access to this acreage will enable the environmental science program to expand its research on local flora and fauna. We also have plans to work with the college performing arts department to create an outdoor amphitheater as an additional, unique location for plays and an alternative location option for their Monday night music jams. Both programs have growing, multi-generational community participation. This location would serve as a fantastic place to host other educational and information programs for both the community and college. We also anticipate working with the Blue Ridge Institute and Museum to create an ADA-accessible interpretive trail on Appalachian culture and life in Farum that leans into our area's moonshine heritage and history. As you know, Franklin County will be part of the upcoming Moonshine Heritage Trail along with Floyd and Patrick Counties, and Farum is a central location. We would love to provide a unique space that gives people understanding of the area's history by exploring where it happened with informational markers and displays. This will encourage tourism to our area and direct people back to the Blue Ridge Institute and Farum College. Increased tourism will help expose more people to all the great programs that Farum College offers. Local events and activities make Farum a more attractive college option for interested students. Our goal is to create more opportunities for interesting activities for both college students and the community. Last year's haunted trail was well-attended, including by Farum College students. Connecting the college trails with public trails would give students and staff easy, walkable access to fresh fruits, vegetables, and locally-made goods at our farmer's market. Although the county now provides no public spaces in Farum, there are many benefits to having public space adjacent to the college. Please consider all the ways Farum College benefits from our plan. Thank you.
Rebecca Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Farum. First, there are not enough words for how much I appreciate every single person who showed up tonight. And there are so many more who wanted to be here and couldn't. I want to focus on the fact that our plan is a holistic approach that addresses many of the needs, issues, and concerns of both the county and the community. We surveyed community members of the farmer's market, community meetings, online. We have surveyed hundreds of people. We use that information to help guide our plan. This plan not only caters to the community, but it also tries to give the county what it's asking for as well. We use the feedback along with all the data gathered and shared by Franklin County through both the Farum Village Area Master Plan and the Farum Parcel Plan to help with determining the best route to go with this. Our plan considers every aspect of what it means to live in Farum. The goal of creating age-and-place solutions has multiple benefits. It creates an easy-to-maintain home and space while still giving seniors or those with mobility needs a location right outside their door to enjoy nature that isn't their responsibility to upkeep. The location of the housing gives homeowners who live there easy access to trails, events, the farmer's market, and more. We made these choices purposefully. As stated in the Farum Area Village Master Plan, elderly isolation is a huge issue in rural communities like ours. Our plan focused on addressing this very real issue that affects many of our community members. We aren't just creating housing, we are aiming to create a community. And if you can't see that we can create a community, look behind me. This whole reason that we are asking to buy the entire eighty-four-acre parcel is because of this. The location for the ADA-accessible trails we have planned would be destroyed with high-density housing. Not to mention the fact that our community just deserves a space. We need a space to go out and be, and be active, and enjoy each other. It's just, it's not possible right now. Mr. Sandy mentioned that we didn't fulfill the Parcel Master Plan. What is overlooked are the multiple ways we fulfill the Farum Area Village Master Plan. We took great care to assess all the data provided by Franklin County, and we created a plan that addressed everything that was asked for in the RFP, just not to the extent that it was asked for. We strongly believe that the reason that they turned us down was because there was not enough housing, and perhaps I'm incorrect with that statement, but that's my belief. The only reason I can see that we didn't qualify was that reason. I hope that you will consider what all the amazing folks sitting behind me want. Look at this turnout. How often do you get this many people to show up for something? Not against it, but for it. And they stayed here for hours now. Look at how much this means to our community. So please, I implore you, just say yes and let us get to work. Thank you.
Good evening, all. Thank you for having us. My name is Don Vineyard. I live at 1755 Five-Mound Mountain Road, Callaway, Virginia. Yes, I'm not from Farum. I'm right across Farum Mountain, and I feel at home there. And the reason I am here today is, obviously, to support the plan. And you've heard all of the really good reasons, but I want to tell you why this is a good idea for y'all. Because the whole reason I got involved is because you came up with this really great idea of a village revitalization. I saw it, I heard about it, I had some friends from the Farum area come to me and say, "Hey, Don, you know how to hold a meeting. Why don't you chair us?" So I had the honor of being the first chair of the Farum Forward Group. And we are really proud of what we've done. We've shown what a Farum Forward nonprofit can do, and the group that came out of that is the Farum Park Plan, folks. I, as I said, don't live in Farum. And one of the reasons I gave up my leadership role is I feel like this is Farum's deal. And I don't want to be seen as an outsider bringing in my ideas. Trust me when I tell you, all of the ideas that they came up with were this group's idea. And that's why you guys need to understand what's happening here. What you came up with was a really good plan, this revitalization plan, and the most important part of it, from my view, is you asked for participation from the community. That's what you want, and that's what you should have. And now you got it. So, going forward, we already have the Union Hall folks who are starting the same kind of thing, and we were honored to be the folks who helped them understand what we were doing. They came to us and said, "Hey, we want to do the same thing. Help get us started." We were glad to do that, and we worked with them as they started their process. And I understand they're getting going pretty good. So there are ways that you can turn this into a participatory community that doesn't just come here and gripe at you, but they say to you, "Hey, we got a need, and we'd love to see you help us with that." So, for y'all's benefit, I think this is one way you can say to the community at large, all of Franklin County and the whole region, this is something that can really grow. Yes, this is an unconventional plan, no doubt about it, but Farum is an unconventional village in all the best ways. It has all the things you need to be like a family-oriented, wonderful community where everybody's involved, and that whole idea can grow with your help, approval, and your continued commitment to the whole idea of the revitalization plan. So, thank you for the plan, thank you for involving us, and I thank you in advance for your approval of our plan. Please help us get going.
Charles Shields.
I'm Charles Shields. I live at 2700 Johnny's Ridge Road in Farum. I'm a retired environmental chemist. I've lived down here now for eight years, and when they mentioned your plan as a committee, your responsibilities, the quality of life, I think was one of the largest. I see that in two aspects. One, in Farum County Park. This is very important in that it prevents exactly what the other two plans were, excessive development. There wasn't going to be a park, there was going to be an expensive development. If there is development, it should be very limited, and it should be limited to people who need it. Bottom-first-floor senior apartments, disability, maybe Section 8, but people who need it. As the government, we should not be supporting the top end of our society. We should be supporting the people that need it. That is counter completely. The other side of the quality of life, as many people here have mentioned, taxes. As a retired person, I'm one of them on a fixed income. I live on my Social Security. Yeah, I get a couple percent a year. That's not going to keep up with the forty-plus percent increase on my taxes. So exactly what everybody else here is saying, you've got a very large senior segment, and they cannot afford these. You want to bring people in, don't drive them out. Thank you for your support.
Don Tyson, 2911 Algoma Road, Boons Mill, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of Farum. We moved here ten years ago from Bethel, North Carolina, Bethel meaning place of God, to God's country. We are on the Callaway side of Boons Mill. While in Bethel, I worked with a group of people to revitalize the town. We got land for a park. Even before we got the land, we called it the Field of Dreams. Because we were dreamers, we needed a park. We didn't have a park. We have a park now. We made it happen because we had support. We made it happen because we had support from the community. It was all community effort, and it didn't cost the county a penny. We also did other things in our community. We started a senior center which has activities Monday through Friday, once-a-week meals, and to make sure that every senior has meals through Meals on Wheels. There was Easter egg hunts, still are Easter egg hunts, Harvest Festival, Christmas Parade, things that didn't happen before. A memorial for our veterans with benches with their names on it. Now there's a heritage center that will be a future museum for Bethel. When I heard about this plan five years ago with Faram Forward, I was all in because I knew that dreams can come true. When we dream these things, as a community, they can come true. You're able to help this come true. You're able to do what needs to be done to allow this property to be bought by the people who are seeking to make it into something. And working with these people, I've seen it happen. This property is not just property. It's a beacon of hope. And not just for Faram, it's for all of Franklin County to see what we can do. And I can't wait to show people what the people of Faram can do because I've worked with them, I know them. Most of them are my really good friends. I don't know if you've ever been to 77 Restaurant after church? If you can find a seat, they know your name. They know what you want to order. This is the kind of people we're working with and dealing with. I don't think anybody, any other developer can say, "This is home." But I love Franklin County. I love being here. 10 years, this has become my home, and I love the people. And I really think that and hope that you will allow this to go forward. Thank you very much.
Corcoran Tyson.
My name is Corcoran Tyson. I live at 2911 Algoma Road in Boons Mill. I am a property and casualty and liability adjuster by trade. And most people bring things to me when things go south. So I generally like to get right to the point. I've read over the proposals that Faram has provided, read over the proposals that the other people have provided. So you basically have two essentially easy choices. You have one plan, the Faram Plan, which is providing and checking off all the boxes for community involvement, open spaces, housing, the whole nine yards. This would be Cinderella. Then you have the other proposal, which basically means bringing in a land mover, cutting everything flat, making a mud pit, turning it into a giant mobile home park. That's Frankenstein. So you've got Cinderella or Frankenstein. That's your choice. Vote for the plan. Secondly, the, I've been here on some couple of other meetings, so I'll bring this up quickly, about the War Memorial Monument in front of the courthouse. Please keep the monument there. I have relatives that died on both sides during the Civil War. The monument that is there is to memorialize the people that sacrificed for their state. Because as you probably know, it was the Army of Northern Virginia, much like was the Army of North Carolina or the Army of Georgia. So they fought for the state of Virginia, and therefore they should be memorialized for doing that. I've heard a lot of the talking points such as, "Well, we shouldn't have it there because they fought for the lost cause." So the lost cause is their talking point. Well, I'm thinking, well, if we have a lost cause as a talking point, then maybe we should go to Washington, DC and tear down the Vietnam Memorial. That was a lost cause. Afghanistan, lost cause. Iraq, lost cause. Where do you want to draw the line? So keep it there. Finally, as far as the property tax assessment, my assessment went up 47%. Oh, dear God. Thank you.
Amos Denton.
Amos Denton, Callaway, Virginia. I'm starting to think that this board feels like it's a development company. Every time I turn around, y'all are wanting to develop something else. I feel like this board should work with private citizens, work with companies to develop stuff. I mean, it's our money. And I hear a master plan. Master plan from 2007? I mean, half y'all wasn't on the board then. Maybe half of you was, I don't know. The only other proposal I've heard of was a company called Human Shelter Group. Are they a local? Are they from Faram? Do they want what's best from Faram? They want a quick buck in their pocket. I don't know. I'm not from Faram. I love Faram. Anybody west of Callaway, you got to get west of Callaway to get the good people. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of people starting to take notice, right or wrong, indifferent. Changing subjects. At the end of the day, this board is responsible for our school system. We got to clean up this mess, for real. Our teacher, nobody has their backs, nobody has principals' backs. Everybody has their hands tied. I talked to a teacher the other night that's been here for 25 years. She came here. She said 18 years ago when she came here that Franklin County was ranked as one of the best places to work in this state and one of the best places for teachers to be taken care of. What about now? Are we still there? I don't think so. We got, Heather Owens was up here and just mentioned, she's been here 18 years too, thank God. We got to keep these old teachers. My kindergarten teacher was my daughter's teacher at Callaway. We got to keep these teachers. I ain't calling you, I ain't calling you old Heather. Looking at data, there's only one kind of county that, a dying county is the only county that loses schools and loses banks. We've lost them both. We're losing them both. We can change it, we got to change it. And finally, a member of this board said, quote, after the meeting last month, "The speakers were combative, accusatory, adversarial, attacking, and confrontational. I was intimidated. However, a show of force by the Sheriff's Department was comforting." I don't want to intimidate any of y'all. Nothing's personal. But I feel like that, you know, we pay the taxes here. We should be able to say what we feel. If y'all are intimidated, come talk to me. I'll talk to anybody. Thank y'all.
Simon Winch.
My name is Simon Winch, 280 Woodwinds Road, Callaway, which is pretty darn close to Faram. It's a hell of a drive over the mountain as well. There's a couple of things I wanted to touch base on. I'm probably not going to take three minutes, but you never know. I'm not a big fan of the town or Franklin County getting into property speculation. I think we've seen some pretty disastrous results thus far. But it does bring to a point with regard to the Faram situation that I would like the board to consider respecting the citizens' wishes. After all, it's a constitutional republic, right? It's not a democracy. We voted you here. So as residents and constituents, I think you should be following your constituents' wishes. It's pretty simple. I also don't want the board supervisors to be acting as an HOA. Please don't do that, particularly when it comes to the rezoning issue, which we're going to have a good battle with later. Anyway, so we'll move on. The property's been sat for 30 years. Pretty close. You've had a master plan since 2007. It's pretty obvious to me, and I'm going to be PC about this, and I'll be polite, and you all know the phrase, but I won't use the whole phrase. I think you need to get off the pot. All right? I think this proposal needs approving. It's solid, it's sound, and it's supported by the constituents. And I'm looking forward to hearing your yes vote. Thank you very much.
Bill Kite.
Bill Kite, 199 Southeast Circle in Pen Hook. On behalf of my wife and my employees, we have owned property and residences within Franklin County for the better part of 35 years. Our businesses have served Franklin County residents for over 40 years, and we relocated these businesses to Westlake in October 2021. We are here tonight because you, as a board, are faced with an unprecedented set of requirements for increased public services while balancing the impact of any decision on your constituents. This demand for services was precipitated by the COVID pandemic and fueled by the resulting effects of significant growth due to people seeking open spaces facilitated by increased internet access, exacerbated by reduced funding for public schools, and fostered by government subsidies for at-home workers. The problem, while the demand for services has been exponential, your approach to solving the problem will significantly impact those of us who are here for the long haul. The effects of COVID from November 2019 to present are still being understood. The influx of people moving into our county was significant. The demand created unexpected increases in real estate values and public services. Franklin County's four-year assessment protocol could not have foreseen its effects on county residents. The closure of schools and transitions to remote learning uncovered a deficiency in county education system. The migration to faith-based education alternatives and homeschooling, the effect of gender ideologues, and the other protocols supported by education unions increased county costs. Federal government programs gave many the opportunity to utilize a COVID sabbatical that employers have had to address with higher wages to entice the employees to return to work and reward those who have stayed. As the board addresses this shortfall in revenue, we hope that you take into consideration that there are many Franklin County residents who have shouldered county financial liabilities for many years. Remaining residents have the responsibility now to keep the county moving forward, but at a time of higher costs and less disposable income. It is imperative that the county education obligation be better managed to be more competitive with educational alternatives. Back to basics, without reaction to political whim may need to be our mantra as the three Rs got most of us in this room to the positions that we've achieved. During our home-building process, we have noticed that others have commented on the delays of securing permits, approvals, construction authorizations. The staff in Franklin County has been great to work with. But wouldn't it be more feasible for the board to identify the amount of construction in the pipeline and then adjust staff to help get future revenue online sooner to help offset the revenue shortfall? Our fear is that increased taxation implemented too quickly just to meet the current four-year assessment protocol will hurt those of us already here.
Roger Jefferson.
My name is Roger Jefferson. My address is 140 Island View Drive, Pen Hook. I'm in the Union Hall District, and I also own property at three or four of y'all's districts. Two things I want to go over. One is the assessments, I think probably end up taking place is probably the worst time it could be because you're coming off a pandemic. And we have an awful lot of folks from up north moving in, basically bidding on homes. The realtor's got to be in the bidding process. And that has softened quite a bit since in the last year or so. And I don't think my home has doubled in price in four years, okay? If you think it has, I'll sell it to you, okay? Be happy to. I'll go somewhere else and live one of the single wives, as they're talking about. And I'm for the firm deal, whatever that is, okay? They sold me on that tonight, okay? If it's nonprofit, maybe I can take some tax breaks, okay? The second piece is a little concerning. I met with the folks who done the assessments, but I own some property on Sega Road Farm Property. And they had a house that, which would be, I guess called an improvement. And we tore the house down two years ago, but they still had it assessed. So it told me, nobody went to look at the property. I think what they're doing is doing an awful lot of assessing, sitting in an office, okay? Or either, well, I'm not really sure what they're doing, okay? But it's probably not fair. You probably didn't get your money's worth, okay? But I think you got a lot of decisions to make. I'll close with saying thank you for what you do. I don't know why you do it, but thank you for what you do, okay? Have a good evening.
Madam Clerk, before you call the next name, I've been asked to take a break. We'll take a 10-minute break and be right back.
Kelly. Kelly Anderson. We've got 12 more speakers. Is Kelly Anderson here?
Kelly Anderson. Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the next name, please.
Ronnie Smith.
Good evening. I am Ronnie Smith, 124 Hillview Drive, Manita. I live on Smith Mountain Lake, and I'm here to talk about the tax assessment. Mine nearly doubled. And I just not too excited about that, except I am going to get excited about the tax rate. So wanted to let you know that I'm looking forward to your cutting the tax to 2020, 2023 tax rate levied against the, in order to be able to maintain the same amount of money that you're going to get out of me. I am retired, fixed income. Can't take a double of the property tax, so. I'll allow the two minutes to somebody else. And as the other gentleman said, I really appreciate what you do. I have a sense of what's back there, and I appreciate your being there. Thank you. Good night.
Peter Kennedy.
Good evening. My name is Peter Kennedy. I live at 170 Island Green Circle in Pen Hook. And I also too want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I'd like to talk about two things. Number one, the teacher situation, the pay situation. My wife and I retired here to the lake a few years ago. And we have two sons who were the beneficiaries of the Fairfax County school system. Now Fairfax County in Northern Virginia gets a lot of bad rap from the people here. But I have to tell you, their school systems are fantastic, or at least they were. There's been some changes, ideological changes, which I won't go into. But our sons today are independent young men, very successful in their careers, partially because of the teachers and the work that they did to help these kids succeed. The other part is that my wife deserves the rest of the credit. Second thing I want to talk about is the tax situation. I wouldn't want to be in your position, but you are. And I ask that you make the right decision after looking yourself in the mirror and reaching down into your heart that you do what's best for the residents of the county. that we represent. And I only ask that you exhaust every other option that's available. I understand that costs have gone up and your budgets are squeezed, but do you have to raise the budget immediately as opposed to phasing it in? Have you looked at that? If not, please consider doing that, and thank you for your time.
George Levicki.
Good evening. My name is George Levicki. I live at 96 Loving Circle in Pen Hook, which coincidentally is the same year I got married. That's a big benefit sometimes. I'd like to thank you all for the work you do behind the scenes and for these public forums, and I also appreciate the opportunity to make a couple of comments. My comments are strictly regarding the tax assessment. I'm very concerned about the recent appraisal and assessment that's being proposed for the good citizens of Franklin County. When property square feet, cost per foot, start to approach those of our major cities, there's something wrong. Justifies the assessment as being reasonable and also being appropriate and also common sense. If it isn't bad enough that a once-in-a-lifetime event, COVID, caused an escalation in our taxes and our influx of people, should be considered in weighing the final decisions on the property values, that's too late. But what we can still do, you can still work for the people of this county and provide a reasonable and equitable tax rate that supports the prudent use of our money, the prudent use of a good budget, and the prudent increase in revenue when it's needed to support keeping us whole. I would ask you that you very seriously consider the impact on people of this county, not only on their taxes, on their insurance costs, and all the other things that come along with this increased property value. It can be devastating for some. A forty-five, forty-one cent per hundred rate is still a thirty percent increase, even if your property values are reduced. So I would encourage you to take a strong consideration and act in the best interest of the people of this county and be put forth a reasonable rate. Thank you for your time.
Sharon Prophet.
Sharon Prophet, 76, Edwardsville Road, Hardy. I'm very nervous. I hope you can bear with me. I hope y'all are a little bit. Today I'm here to talk about location, location, location. And what I mean by that is, I live on 7639 Edwardsville Road, Hardy, Virginia. Our assessment went up for 2024 to, went up seventy percent from what it was last year. The area we live in, there's houses, double wides, trailers. I think there's two at least subdivisions, if not more, possibly. And when I keep hearing this thing about Franklin County, I'm realizing there's some that's gone up eighty-five percent, some's gone seventy percent, some's gone fifty percent, and then there's thirty percent down in Boone's Mill. Now, don't ask me why, but y'all know about it. Again, location, location, location. We're not on Smith Mountain Lake. We're on Edwardsville Road. Our home is paid for. We've been there twenty-seven years. Our assessment went up one hundred and four thousand over last year. We don't have the type houses like the Smith and Mountain Lake people do. I'm not putting down Smith Mountain Lake people, but if they won't build five hundred million-dollar houses, go for it. There they are. We like to keep our place looking good. Some people don't in the area. They keep, they probably are doing the best they can, maybe. I don't know. Maybe they don't have the money. Maybe they don't have the health. I'm just not sure what it is. I'm seventy, living on a fixed income, and I'm very, I don't know if y'all noticed it, and I'm very upset about the assessment. We have a small nest egg, thank God, but what about these eighty-year-old and ninety-year-old people that couldn't make it here maybe tonight? And they're over there, and they live on these fixed incomes. We don't want to live on Smith Mountain Lake. We don't want to live there because we chose to build a house in a rural area. And if that's not already, what I'd like to ask y'all, if y'all have not already made this, a decision about this assessment, I had heard it was already done, I hope and pray it ain't, then I would appreciate and ask you all to consider and reconsider location, location, location. Now, also, this seventy percent income will cause our homeowner's insurance to go up, and that's something else to reconsider. So I do thank y'all's attention. Thank you for staying awake while we're here, and God bless you.
Gerald Prophet.
Well, I guess you may have guessed, my name is Gerald Prophet, and I'm at 7639 Edwardsville Road also. And I've actually been a resident in Franklin County since seventy-six. We built a new house, me and my new wife, in nineteen ninety-six. And like I say, we're on a modest income. That's no fault, I mean, you know, it's my choice I made to stick with the jobs I did, but at the same time, we are, like she said, on a fixed income, and both of us together are not making, breaking fifty thousand, okay? With social security and all. I mean, good thing we've saved what we have and have everything paid off at retirement because we would be in a mess right now. And I know a lot of you don't understand that, and that's okay. I don't understand people probably on a lower scale than I am even damn, but we need to, we need to consider, you know, we've got enough homeless people out here now as it is. And I'm not saying I will be the next one, but it's no reason to say that I might be by the end of the month. You don't know what your future holds. None of y'all do. And so I'm not here to scold or fuss because, I mean, I wouldn't want your job. I know it's a tough job, and I respect you for it. But at the same time, you've got to put yourself in our shoes a little bit and just realize that we're not, I have never came to one of these meetings. I've been here since seventy-six. I've had plenty of reasons to, if I wanted to just gripe, but I'm not a griper. It takes a whole lot to get me started. And I want you to remember, one thing left is like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. I'm sure it hasn't been that far in the distance future. You remember how that bubble burst. Well, who's to say it's not gonna, it's gonna be. I'll just go out front. High school education only, but I've got plenty of common sense, and we know and you know that it's going to be a bigger pop on the economy than Freddie Mae, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac ever was because people are desperate for housing, and there's a housing shortage, and so they're paying way too much to get a house because they think it's going to be their last chance, you know, until more housing comes along. So that's driving up prices. A house right down below us, an old farmhouse built back in the twenties, has been totally remodeled. I know that from being on Zillow. They paid three hundred and thirty thousand, okay? But you got to understand, it's only got another acre than, more than we do. And it's an old house, but simply because it's been remodeled. We have been there since ninety-six, no upgrades whatsoever except for a larger deck. And so I don't know where this extra hundred and four thousand jump in the last time it was reassessed came from, but it's ridiculous. I mean, you're forcing more people out to the street, and then where will you draw on your money? Thank you.
Mike Collins.
First of all, I thank you for the time. I wanted to tell you I'm a veteran.
Please state your address, please, for the record, sir.
My name is Mike Collins. I live on eighty-three, eighty-four Edwardsville Road in Hardy. I do not live on the lake. A good friend of mine just said, "Location, location, location," and that means the truth. We cannot be appraised because we live in the same zip code area as the people that live on the lake. I, I'm on fixed income, like I'm sure some of you folks are on the board up here. And when you only have a certain amount that's coming in each month, you try to allot it in such a way that you can make your bills and pay your bills. But somebody that gets a appraisal of eighty percent more than what it was last year at this time, it's a little unnerving. Then, at the same time, basically the same week that I got the appraisal, insurance company calls me and tells me my homeowner's insurance is going up almost four hundred dollars in a year. These things, I mean, I can go back to work. I'm disabled, but I could go back to work, and I may have to. I don't really want to, but you know, it comes down to the point, either you put food on the table, or you buy your medicine, or you go back to work. The allotment that we now are talking about, the possibility of the appraisal, I would appreciate it if you consider it again, put it down in to a reasonable rate. These increases should be done in a gradual way, not come back and double and triple possibly some of these appraisals. That's all I ask you to do is give it a fair chance and think about the possibilities. Thank you for your time. God bless you. Have a good night.
Marissa Carey. Marissa Carey. David Resenades.
I get real nervous, public speaking anyway. David Resendes, fifteen thirty Buffalo Ridge Road Firm, Virginia. I just more or less to try to save time because I know everybody's tired and all that good stuff. Been here a while, um, been here since almost two thirty myself. I'm for the firm park. I'm also one of the small businesses that would be volunteering time. I have a small excavation business in the county, and just kind of wanted to share that a little bit. Some of them know that. And a lot of this assessment stuff, it's crazy the way it all works. I'm getting nervous. Sorry, y'all. Really first time doing something like this.
Take your time, sir.
But, well, we ain't got too much. You know, I also wanted to bring up points, you know, and I'm glad we're always looking out for the seniors and doing things. I volunteer a lot of my time and my equipment to helping people that don't have money in the county. I've been to many different states and places in the state volunteering, helping people. With my many skills that I have, I'm licensed, insured, and know about DQ. I'm not going to, anyways, I'm rambling. But I think we also got to look at a lot of people. I have five children I raised, and I got eight grandchildren in the county. But we need to think about ways also helping these young families, being affordable to get housing and living, you know? Of course, our seniors are extremely important to me, but you know, I never hear where I'm in here about young people and what we're going to do to keep them here and make it better for them, you know? And I mean, I'm always trying to thrive and do things. I'm trying to get a lot of them involved here. I think if y'all do give firm, the community, the park, I think it will kind of show a lot that I know I talk to of all different walks of life because a lot of them don't have a lot of faith in the government and the process and stuff like that. So maybe if we start giving a little bit and to the people, and you know, we can get them more involved and get them excited about it. But I'm going to save the rest of the time for y'all and to whoever else, and thank you.
Glenna Moore.
Good evening. Glenna Hawkins-Moore, forty-five Scenic River Drive, Snow Creek District. This year's Women's History Month celebrates women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. Here are just a few of the many dynamic black women in Franklin County's history, from revolutionary times to the present. Nancy Beverly, seventeen hundreds. Court records show that she was a free black woman married to a black, excuse me, Revolutionary War soldier. She was the great-grandmother of Herod and Samuel Beverly, Civil War United States colored troops. Free blacks of that era were required to be registered, numbered, and described by the court clerk. Franklin County records show that Nancy was forty-three years old, of low stature, without any particular marks on her body. She had to carry free papers at all times. Polly Crockett, eighteen thirty, a skilled weaver and Franklin County free black woman during the colonization of Liberia movement, started by whites who wanted to decrease the number of free blacks in America, believing they were a bad influence on the enslaved. Polly led her family of twelve in a party of forty-four Franklin County migrants, immigrants to Liberia, West Africa, believing it would offer a better life. Indiana Choice, eighteen fifty-one, free black woman who demanded her day in court. She sued one of the county's most prominent white men, asking an all-white jury to reject his claim that she was his slave. She won. It's unclear as to whether she paid Jubal Early to defend her, or he was a court-appointed. Mamie Holland Blanch Hicks Ira Phelps, nineteen forty-eight, accepted positions in the newly organized Franklin County branch of the NAACP at historic First Baptist Church. Dorothy Phelps, eighteen, nineteen eighty-five, appointed to Rocky Mount Town Council. She became the first African-American woman on the Rocky Mount Town Council. Florrella Johnson and Mary Helm, nineteen sixties and seventies, civil rights advocates and activists, NAACP members and leaders in desegregating the Franklin County School Board, desegregating lunch counters, and organizing boycotts and picketing to protest unfair hiring practices in Rocky Mountain businesses, such as Ben Franklin Five and Ten, Rexall Drugstore, Kroger, and IGA. Bridget Craghead, twenty-first century activist, encouraging Franklin County to believe black history and black lives matter. Thank you.
All right, that's the last of the list that Madam Clerk has. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak that was not on the list, please come forward, state your name and address, please, and we'll get everybody an opportunity that wants to speak. Sir?
My name's Keith Johnson. I live at 190 Leading Oak Road in Boone's Mill. Thank you for your patience tonight. I've been here a few times before. A lot has happened in the last month. When I left town a few weeks ago, school administration was making pleas to get money from you so they would not have to close any schools due to the budget shortfall, their budget shortfall. When I came back to town, I learned you voted to give the school administration the money they wanted. I think that was probably a difficult decision. I would not have voted to give the money to the school at this point, but I recognize the effort to try to compromise and try to do what's best considering all viewpoints. Within a few days after your vote, school board voted to close two schools and use the money to provide for something else. And that was, quite honestly, that's just a bait and switch. It was dishonest. It's not on you, but it makes it difficult. How do you deal with a group that does business this way? If you didn't know it before, now you can see for yourself what we have been trying to deal with, with trying to get pornography out of the schools. Almost two years, for almost two years, school officials have yet to explain any evidence-based or best practices principles that justifies their collecting pornography to make it available to our students. Moving forward, what should we consider regarding the school's request to fund CTE, Career Technical Education? Unfortunately, their request is only for bricks and mortar. It does not include the cost of the CTE program, and it's a high price they're asking. A good CTE program requires partnerships of business leaders in the community. Businesses want to be involved in this type of program because it helps businesses evaluate and recruit dependable, qualified employees with skills and certifications. A lot of good can come from a good program. A lot of good can come from a good program. The hard truth we learned in the effort to remove pornography from our school, the school administration is strongly opposed to engaging in our community, involving the community in what they're doing. I hope you recognize the need and are able to attach conditions to money you give school administration in the future, just like grants they receive from other sources. This is gonna be a difficult process as you go forward, and I don't envy you at all, but you asked for this job. I think, based on comments from I've heard tonight, I think it bears repeating something I've heard from other officials, is that the Franklin County taxpayer already pays more for our schools per student than any other county school board district in the region. So it's an issue of how are they using their funds to do what we're expecting them to do, instead of coming here demanding more money? And I don't know how you address that. I hope you consider that. Thank you for your time.
Sir, did you want to speak in the back? Come forward, please.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Peggy Newman, and my address is four thirty-seven Ditto Branch Lane, Penhook, Virginia. I do have a question. This is the very first year I've actually got to look at my assessment in detail, each and every item. Can someone please explain to me when a hot tub becomes real estate? That is on my tax assessment. And it's a hot tub that I haven't owned in three years. So how can that assessor say he came down on my property when there's no hot tub there? He went off the previous assessment, and from what I understand, it's been on there for awhile. Also, a wood stove. When is that real estate? I got, and I'm being taxed on my assessment for a wood stove. I don't understand this, and I really wish somebody on this board could explain it to Can you explain it?
Ma'am, this board don't answer questions here.
But can y'all look into that? And if they've got that on my assessment, and they took my assessment from a hundred and forty-five thousand up to two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, what have they done to everybody else's, and they never even went on my property? There's no way they could've, because they would've known that hot tub was not there. It's been gone for three years. Thank you for hearing me. You guys have a great day.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to address the board? Please come forward.
Evening. My name's Joel Long, twenty-two Carolina Springs here in Rocky Mount. Just a few things that I wanted to touch on. This Farnum Park, as I understand it, involves bringing new housing to Franklin County, which I support, hopefully you guys do as well, considering that all the jobs that are going into the new industrial park will need housing certainly for those jobs. Couple of the folks here from Hardy expressed concerns with their appraisals or their assessments going up while they did not live at Smith Mountain Lake, and I just wanted to correct the record for them that the Waters Edge Golf Course assessment went up eight percent, single-digit, eight, in addition to that vacant land use. It was one of the previous speakers mentioned in the last meeting, it's taxed as a cow pasture. So in addition to that, they're at an eight percent increase in their assessed value for that golf course. That's a bit of a mystery to me, should be, I think, to you guys also as our elected From the previous meeting, one item there, the school board formally requested stopgap funding in the amount of two-point-five million dollars. And as I recall it, and I think your minutes will reflect, there was a motion made to support and fund two-point-five million dollars, which was then voted on four to three, passed, roll call was taken. My concern is that at the end of that meeting, a clarification was made to that vote. You can't clarify a vote. You make a new motion and vote again. So where did the other one-point-two-five, one-point-three, one-point-two? Nobody knows at this point how much money the school actually received. That's my question. The minutes don't reflect it. So I think that the motion should be accurate. If they're not accurate, nobody's mad at you. Make a new motion and correct the record. Don't do it by, nobody can hear that. It's not recorded in the minutes. Lastly, I really want to say thank you to the majority of this board. We have a teacher sitting back here, who was, that wished to speak, who's been teaching our children for nearly twenty years, nineteen if I remember it correctly, and the question was put, should we give her three minutes? Give that lady all night.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak that wasn't on the list? Come forward, please.
Put my name on the list, I don't know what happened to that, about this. I have a picture. I called Ms. Rennick earlier to show the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Lenore Overstreet. I live at eight-two-three Scruggs Road, Wards, Virginia. It's a little deceiving, I'm in the Westlake Overlay District. I'm here before you because the last time I left off of VDOT in the county, they were gonna go forward with their smart scale project. I was fine with that, but my last interpretation with them was they were gonna try to shift it to hopefully be above my farm area. My only concern in the picture is there's two cut-throughs, so if I'm coming down the road, I would have to then turn horizontally to get into my driveway, which to me seems as like it's gonna put me in danger of getting hit, not to mention my other driveway is a farm entrance. So if I try to pull out and traffic is coming, and I'm on a tractor, bailer, this more, you name it, whatever's behind me, I'm gonna get hit. That was my whole purpose for meeting with VDOT, to get it moved above me. So I know VDOT's been back to you all and said they can't move it. Well, it seems like other projects, they seem to move whatever the other ones want to, like Burt T Washington, they got their turn lanes or whatever, moved away from them. I'm just asking for a little courtesy, too. We've been in the county over a hundred-plus years on this farm. I'm just asking for some safety for myself. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? Seeing no more, then we'll go back into our next, all right, so we need to go back into closed session and finish our meeting out there. Mr. Tatum, will you read the motion again to go back into closed session?
Sure will. Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven, A-one personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, and et cetera, A-three discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property, A-five discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, A-seven consultation with legal counsel or briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters requiring legal advice, A-twenty-nine discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Let's reconvene back in. Turn my thing back on here, Donna. Can you hear me now? That's gooder, isn't it?
Gooder.
That's gooder, okay. Mr. Tatum?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to table item number nine in response to the RFP on the eighty acres in Farn until at such time as the county attorney and staff can report back to us on the questions that were raised in closed session.
What kind of time period are you talking, Mr. Chairman? Next meeting?
It was, they've got some research they got to do on the RFP. I would, let me, let me ask Mr. Whitlow and the county attorney, Mr. Quinn, what's an ample time? A week, next week, during our two weeks?
A week would be great.
Yeah, let's do that.
You need, all right, will you put that in your motion?
You've got a meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Hold on, hold on, let's, I'll hold your motion. We don't have a second. We'll put the time on it. Let's stop right there. Mr. Whitlow, do you have the dates there? I know we've got our, we've got our work session Thursday.
Correct.
And then you've got a date on there where we've got to come back, we're coming back Monday for our public hearing on the?
On the county budget, proposed county budget, yes, at six P.M.
All right, that's Monday, so that's, so when is the next, the workshop, the retreat, that date?
Hearing the availability of the board members, Mr. Chairman, looking at possible times, it looks like Mr. Nick Mitchell and Mr. Mike Carter cannot necessarily do the mornings, but can do the afternoons. And so it would have to be looking potentially the afternoon of Wednesday, April the third, or Thursday, April the fourth. And then, of course, if the board members want to check their calendars, if you have those, but when we've done the polling, that those two dates look to be the most practical for the board at this point, Wednesday, April third, and Thursday, April the fourth, in the afternoon.
What time, what time will work for you all's schedule?
Wednesday works for me, the third.
I was gonna say, Thursday works for me.
What, what time, if we do it Thursday?
You tell us.
I could be open Thursday by one o'clock, I'd say.
Well, I couldn't, I could either do Thursday morning, well, up until eleven, or Thursday afternoon, starting at three o'clock or something like that.
We, what we've got, what we've got to discuss, what we've got to discuss is the, the, the two things that we've got to discuss is the MOU with the town, and the Parks and Rec Economic Development for the fair, and the five-to-six-year plan, so we can get it down for the midway. That's the two things. And it's probably gonna be, I'm gonna say, y'all tell me, the MOU's gonna take awhile.
Mr. Chairman, if we're only gonna be dealing with a public hearing on the twenty-fifth, would that not be, because Jim said a week would be good.
You have a test, well, can you, can you have it done by the public hearing, the twenty-fifth?
That way we're not, because I know your retreat topics are gonna be?
They're gonna be?
Heavy.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to, if we do it either the third or the fourth, now it doesn't matter to me, for my part, and I think the part is gonna be with you all. Y'all, y'all pick that out, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be here a few minutes with that. So if that, if that okay with the fair, with staff for the twenty-fifth?
I can have the opinion to you. I don't know that I could be here on that meeting. But you won't need it.
Well, if, if we've got the opinion here by the twenty-fifth?
You'll be fine.
We'll be fine, because it's gonna be a public, we can, I'm not sure whether it take board action. It would be, what time, what time is the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing is at six P.M., but of course, this board could recess, you know, for a time earlier that evening, say five or five-thirty P.M. prior to the public hearing, if that would work for the board. That is, that is a possible option.
Because that has to be discussed in opening, the opinion. We can recess till, is five gonna give us plenty of time? I mean, to discuss?
Yeah, I think.
We should be able to read the opinion. If, if you get through earlier?
I will.
If, if you get before that?
I will.
Get it to Chris, and he can send it to us.
Yep.
He can get it sent to us before then.
Yep.
And then, then we can, we'll have been able to have read it. All right, so you wanna do that then, to?
I'll try to put it on.
Till five o'clock.
That would be great.
On the twenty-fifth.
On the twenty-fifth, on March.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, will you amend your motion till March the twenty-fifth?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we've got a motion to table item number nine for response to the RFP on the eighty acres in Farn until such time as the county attorney and staff can report pack by March the twenty-fifth.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I need, so moved, I need a second.
Yes, sir.
Marshall, Jamison seconds it. We don't, we don't need to do a roll call on that. All in favor signify with a C and I?
Aye.
Any opposed, the same side. All right, that takes care of that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to just offer a brief comment, if I may.
Sure, you go ahead, sir.
Just for an explanation to our friends here from Farnum. We had some legal questions that need to be answered in regard to the process, and so that's why we're taking this extra time. It's not trying to postpone anything or drag it out, we just have to make sure we're legal. I was hoping we'd have you a yes answer tonight, but it may have to wait a week or so. Thank y'all for staying. I apologize that we can't make a call tonight, but we gotta make sure we're legal.
Nothing we do is easy.
That, you know, and just as a segue into Mr. Tatum's comment, there's legalities that we have to follow, and that's what he's talking about. And we have to make sure, the rumors are around every, all the time, y'all, y'all been coming to these meetings and what we've been accused of, but it's not that way. It's procedures, and it is controlled by law, not by us, by law. That's, that's why that gentleman's here at all the meetings, to keep us legal and keep us out of trouble. And so that's, that's what that's for. Now, I need to entertain a motion. Mr. Carter is on the DSS board, and Mr. Carter has a couple, you want me to tell him, or you wanna explain, that some medical issues with his family, and he needs to take a leave for a couple or three months until he gets those worked out. So instead of coming off, we need to appoint an alternate member to take his place for a couple of months at such time as Mr. Carter can come back and a couple of months at such time as Mr. Carter can come back and resume his duties.
That's on the DSS Board?
DSS Board.
Not the Board of Supervisors?
Not the Board of Supervisors, on the Department of Social Services Board. So, I'll need to entertain a motion for, that we approve, because we do not have an alternate member, it's just the way it is, and then we'll entertain a motion to amend our bylaws to do the alternate member, and then we will appoint an alternate member. That's why we need to do that, Mr. Quinn, or can we just do it all at one time?
Yeah, I think you just do it all at one time.
All right, then it's...
I think the alternate itself is enough, I don't know that you need...
The bylaws?
Just, okay, we don't need to do that, then if, uh, for the couple of months, I'll, I'll go on there if y'all like, I'll take care of that for a couple of months until at such point that Mr. Carter can come back and resume his duties. I need a motion on that.
I will offer a motion, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would motion that, um, Chairman Thompson, um, act as an alternate on the DSS Board in place of our board rep, Mike Carter, uh, for the next, did you say two months or three months?
At, at such point, Mr. Carter says two.
For the next two months?
Two to three months.
I would say three months.
Okay.
And if you come back earlier, that's fine.
If you come back earlier, that's fine, buddy.
So that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And motion, will we do, you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Whitlow, will you go over the, uh, calendar, once again, please, for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna do that off of, uh, memory, so, uh, Mr. Brian Carter and Ms., Ms. Ross or Mr. Sandy and Ms. Renick, she, she keeps us in line. By the way, um, uh, I would, a shout out to Amy Renick, our clerk, uh, today, this is, uh...
Remarkable.
It is remarkable that she worked to put this meeting together logistically, working through this, first meeting without really the assistance of, of the previous clerk, and I just wanna give a shout out to, to Amy, she did just great work today, Amy.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, that's right.
Ms. Renick, how many, uh, names did you call in the public comment?
I'm not sure, it was a lot. It was a lot.
So, to, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, so our next m- meeting, uh, is actually this Thursday, it's a budget work session this Thursday, um, well, actually, the broadband authority, I should say, which is the Board of Supervisors, meets this Thursday afternoon at two P.M. for a brief meeting, to be followed by the work session with the Board of Supervisors at two-thirty, where we will have David Rose, our, um, our financial advisor with Davenport and Company, and we'll focus on, uh, the county's capital budget, um, and, uh, the proposed budget, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and, and that work session. Um, and then we will come back, uh, then, Monday, from that meeting at five P.M., uh, again, to discuss the consideration, uh, again, of, um, item number nine, which was the Faram housing proposal, that's five P.M., and that would be Monday, uh, March the twenty-fifth, to be followed by the public hearing on the FY, proposed FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget, um, and that is just on the proposed budget, that's, um, while, um, tax rates and so forth are, um, melded into that, that's not the tax rate public hearing. The tax rate public hearing, um, is scheduled for Monday, April the eighth, at six P.M., and that includes two public hearings, one being the reassessment hearing, the effective tax rate for real estate, and then the other tax levies, and so that's what the board has, uh, before, uh, the, now, Mr. Chairman, I know we did talk about another potential work session, um, with the board, um, either on that Wednesday, April the third, or that Thursday, April the fourth, in the afternoon, and so, um, if we still need to get our calendars together, Mr. Chairman, maybe the board, we can decide that more formally if, if need be, on Thursday, um, at Thursday's meeting, or we can do that now.
Have y'all, do we need to wait till Thursday?
I think we've got pretty much those two, I think they've decided what, Thursday at three, what's good for both of you all? Mike, was that correct?
Yeah, that's okay.
Thursday, the fourth?
Thursday, April fourth, three P.M.
At three, three P.M., and we, uh, will be here for a little bit.
Three P.M.
Is that when we're gonna have the departments start to come in, Mr. Whitlow?
Ms. Smith, that is certainly the, the pleasure of the board, good, you know, we haven't necessarily scheduled departments at, at, at this point, we're starting with the work session this Thursday afternoon, two-thirty, with David Rose and Davenport and Company. If the board would like to hear more specifically, we have, um, uh, notified some of our departments to be ready, um, at what point the board may want to hear, um...
I think we need to hear on the fourth, because of what we dealing with, because everybody wants to talk to, uh, Paul Chapman at Parks and Rec, and, uh, Kevin Tosh.
Oh, okay.
I think we need those two here. What do y'all think?
Oh, okay, I see what you're doing.
Absolutely, I heard, huh?
Several was brought to public safety as well.
So, are you talking about your retreat items for the fourth, is that what?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, I'm clear now.
That's what, that's the retreat?
Gotcha.
Is, is for that?
Gotcha.
On that, we needed, that's two major things that we need to deal with, the, uh, and, uh, the memorandum of understanding, and then the, uh, we've got to do the five-year plan, six-year plan, for the, uh, Parks and Rec, and for the economic, for the ag fair, because of, uh, you remember Kevin was talking about, he was having a hard time getting a contract with the midways because we didn't have it, and that would give him some, uh, dealing power.
I would like to request, Mr. Chairman, knowing that we have asked, I know I asked for several departments to come back before us, could we look at the week of April eighth to start bringing them in for work sessions?
I, I mean, that's up to the board, uh...
That's why I'm asking.
That's up to the...
I'm gonna be gone.
That, that's the reason we changed it, that's the reason we changed it to Monday night instead of Tuesday night, because of prior obligations, so we can't do anything that week, because Mr. Jamison will be gone.
The week of the eighth, right?
Yes.
That's the week of the eighth.
So the week of the fifteenth, then, right?
We can go to the following week, when, when...
And that's board meeting week?
Be back.
We can, we can set up, that's board meeting week, we can set up then and start and have several people in on that work session, on that Thursday.
Let me just...
When, when do we need to, well, we gotta...
The, the scheduled tax rate adoption, um, following the tax rate public hearing is scheduled for Monday, April the eighth, and, of course, um, depending on that tax rate adoption, really, that's, that's the revenue that dictates the budget, frameworks and structures the budget, so...
We gotta do it before then, don't we?
You know, the tax rates can be adopted before the budget's adopted, um, by state code, the school board budget has to be adopted by May the fifteenth. Um, delaying that, however, you know, the concern from staff, once tax rates are adopted, you know, that's the amount of revenue that really guides the budget. So, if that decision on Monday, April the eighth, on tax rates, impacts the expenditures of departments, then we have to look either at additional time, you know, prior to the April the eighth, um, time on April the fourth, um, or another, another session with departments. We can have, uh, I will say this, we can have departments available, we will do our best, very short notice, um, but we can do that for Thursday, but I know the guidance we've been given thus far is really Mr. Rose being with here, uh, with us on Thursday.
I thought it was the consensus of the board not to do anything until after we talked with, uh, Dave, uh, Mr. Rose. The other ones that we, I remember, y'all helped me with our list, I know it was public safety, there was some school board issues.
General properties?
It was.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Parks and Recreation, Tourism.
Well, Parks and Rec and Tourism, we can take care of at the retreat. It was Public Safety, School Board, Economic Development, what was the other one?
General Properties.
General Properties. Is that, is that the list?
I think so.
I think that was the list one. We need to deal with those four and, uh, uh, well, it was actually with six, but we can take, uh, Park Rec and MOU there. That takes care of Paul and, uh, Kevin. How much time do you all anticipate with the other four? You wanna try to do it Thursday after, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Marshall, how much time do you anticipate with the other four, do you wanna try to do it, uh, Thursday after, uh, Mr. Rose gets them and staff have them here? Uh, I don't know that, especially with the school board, that's gonna take a while.
Yes.
Public Safety, uh, ED and General Properties, uh, Public Safety's probably gonna take a while, the longest, if we can do Public Safety, ED and General Properties, Economic Development and Public Properties, uh, can we do that this Thursday? I mean, we'll have to stay here a while.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we already here.
I'm cool with that.
And we'll set up another one, we'll just have to set up a day, we've got a little bit longer on the school board, we don't necessarily, maybe we can discuss some direction on how you wanna go to help with the budget a little bit, we're gonna have to talk about the school board a little bit that day.
Are we gonna want them here? Are we gonna want administration here, or the board chair, and Dr. Sears, I mean, we're gonna have to give them some notice if there's...
We're gonna, I mean, I think, I think we, I think it's important that we talk to them and have some time, and I don't think for the timeframe that we necessarily have them here that, then, and, and I don't know that we're gonna have the time to put into that, I think that might be, I, I can see that, I can see that taking two, three hours on its own.
Yeah.
Mr. Whitlow, didn't you say they had to have their assembly the fifteenth?
Of May.
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 Of May.
Yes, sir.
But if we're gonna set the rate for taxes, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to, I think, I think that, uh, I think we're gonna have to, y'all tell me what you wanna do, but I think we need to...
I would lean, you know, and I've said this before, I would lean to Chris and his staff as to, um, appropriating funds, and, and it's really a matter of what, where we wanna land at on the tax rate, um, and I, I spoke what I had to say about it at our last meeting, I, I'm not for getting in there nitpicking their budgets and whatnot, I do like to see an overlay of some of them, but I'll leave that to Chris and them, um, it's more of a matter of where we wanna see the tax rate land, in my opinion, than it is diving into it too deep.
And before, before we get into the, uh, school budget a whole lot, you know, I made the request for staff to come back with some, uh, information on, uh, uh, you know, appropriating their funds, and I like to hear about that, whether it's monthly, quarterly, or just like we've been doing it, because once that money's appropriated to them, it's gone, it's out of our hands, and then, uh, I mean, I'm still, I'm still at the point with my motion of the, I have no problem at all with what I said the other day with, uh, I don't have my papers, what was it, E one, two, three, and then from, uh, uh, the other category from one to fifteen, with the three percent proposed budget, but above that, uh, with staff, one or one and a half cent, because you take, to appropriate it outright, three percent, you know, it's like you heard them teachers this afternoon, you know, one lady been here eighteen years and still hadn't got to fifty thousand, and then here the, here these, and then that information that Mr. Carter gave us, you know, about freezing everything, but them administrators weren't frozen, they got their money, that's, that's, that's what, that bothers me, and I don't know about the rest of y'all, but that's how I feel about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we definitely need to have some conversation with the school board on their budget, because, um, I, I was playing last month, and I haven't changed my mind, I'm not gonna approve it the way it is now, and I think they need to have, they need to know that, and they need to know what the board's sentiments is, so that they can make the adjustments to something we can't approve.
I mean, you, you all see, y'all got the book that I got, look at that one graph with that dollar bill. Now, I mean, that dollar bill speaks volumes of where the county is with, uh, on the budget, where the school is, and, and, and what we're doing with everything else, I mean, that's sorta in your face, that pie chart.
You know, I, I have a, a question I'd like for them to answer, we spend more money per capita, per child, than any other county around, with exception of Roanoke City. How is it that Henry County, Montgomery County, and all these other counties can pay their teachers more with less? It doesn't look like it's a funding problem for us, it looks like to me it's a management problem.
I agree with you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment?
Sure.
Um, to neck to your point, I think that in terms of budgets are about choices, and the proposed budget's set at forty-five cents, so this board's got to come to an agreement about what, what the tax rate is gonna be, and we, but we've got, while we do that, we've gotta understand what budget pressures we've got to address, and that should help direct the tax rate, or on the flip side, you set the tax rate, you know, you decide on it, and then you just, we have to give staff guidance on what stays and what goes.
I understand.
That's correct, that's correct. I was certainly hoping that, uh, you know, we said that, you know, we can come down, but we can't go up, I was, and I, I'm certainly hoping we could come down, but I, I don't want us to get in a bind like we were before, we're playing catch-up, so...
I think we're gonna have to do incremental increases to keep from hitting hard, you know, all at one time.
You're probably right. You're probably right.
Because we're so far behind.
All right, so, uh, can we do, can we do Public Safety, uh, Economic Development, and General Properties Thursday?
We will, I'm, I'm looking at General Properties now.
I, I guess the question would be what you're wanting to see.
I, I guess basically, uh, we just wanna discuss, uh, your budget proposal, where it was at, and, and talk about that.
Operating capital both?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Operating capital both?
Yes.
Okay.
So you said, um, facilities, what was the other one for Thursday?
Public Safety, uh, Economic Development, and General Properties.
So you're gonna do Public Safety Thursday?
I think, I think we can, uh, I think we can get, get that, it's going. Uh, David Rose, he'll be here, I don't, we don't need to, uh, we don't need to limit him at all.
Mm-mm.
And if we start around, how long do you anticipate the, uh, broadband?
Thirty minutes.
And we'll put Mr. Rose first, and then, uh...
And it may not take thirty minutes.
Okay. And then we get, we do other matters by supervisors, however how long that takes, and, uh, that, that probably shouldn't take a whole lot of time, but it is what it is, and if it's, uh, I would think an hour on each one would be a whole lot, it's more than that it is, so if Mr. Rose takes it till, say, say, two hours, probably anticipate, what do y'all think, four or five hour meeting? What y'all think, four or five hour meeting?
I mean, I doubt Brandy's gonna need an hour.
I doubt if they do, but, yeah. Then we'll take a break after supper and do what we gotta do.
Do you, would it be helpful, I mean, I had a lot of questions on Public Safety, would it be helpful if I preview that with you ahead of Thursday?
Sure, sure, if...
In terms of preparation?
Sure, if, if, if you all have any other thoughts, we took notes the other day, if you have any other thoughts?
Okay.
You know, on Public Safety, get that information to us, we'll do our best to, to get Public Safety prepared, uh, for, for Thursday, and then, uh, Economic Development, of course, you heard an overview today, but, um, depending on Ms. Dowdy's availability, um, I, I don't know if she's available, you know, that evening, but, you know, certainly we will pull her budget and, and, uh, can speak to that, Brandy mentioned General Properties, and then, uh, we mentioned Tourism, Parks and Rec on Thursday the fourth, but then, again, I don't know if there's any further discussion and how the board wants to, uh, move forward with, uh, any further discussion. wants to move forward with any further discussion with the schools, or the school staff, at this point.
What do you think? How y'all feel? Everybody shaking their head, okay?
I think we're probably gonna have to allot time with the schools.
We're gonna have to.
Independently of any other work session.
I think so, too.
And that's gonna be trying to herd cats.
Yes, 'cause, you know, the availability for the board, you know, we had that Wednesday the 3rd and Thursday the 4th, you know, prior till April the 8th.
Why can't we just, right now, tentatively say, in our April meeting, the Tuesday is the 16th, is that correct? I think so, so the Thursday will be the 18th, tentatively have the school board or their representative here on that 18th work session, up to. And whoever's, whoever can come, can come, and whoever can't, can't. That should give Dr. Sears and them, Mr. Terry, pretty good, I mean, we're talking a month away.
I think you need to extend the invitation to the school board with the caveat that, you know, if, if there's an attendance issue, because we're so limited on dates, that we would understand that, if that's the will of the board.
Okay, so just to clarify, are we looking to have a joint meeting with the entire school board, or just to have the school superintendent and staff here?
Whomever, if, whoever wants to come.
Invite them all.
Invite them.
I think you gotta plan for a joint meeting. I, is that okay with you?
I don't, I don't care, I-
I just think that the level of questions, you know, we're gonna, the school board is gonna be the ones that need to answer the questions, there's gonna be some technical questions of finance, but I'm not, Dr. Sears is gonna not be able to answer the types of questions that we have, I think, so.
I sure would like to have some insight on the, but before that meeting, on the potential of giving their budget once a month, once a quarter, just, I'm not saying that we'd do it, I'd just like to know the-
The logistics.
The particulars, yeah, the logistics.
Are you talking about like the monthly financial reporting, or the allocation of funds?
Allocation.
Okay.
Just, just to see how it's done, if you, you know how it works.
So, if I'm hearing the board, then possibly sending an invitation to have a joint meeting with the school board on Thursday, April the 18th?
Yes, sir.
Is that would be our normal work session time at 3:00 PM, I guess, if that's a possibility, and this would be to discuss the proposed school budget.
Yes, sir.
So, we're adopting the tax rate.
Sorry, Chris, what date was that, Thursday, what?
Thursday, April the 18th.
That's our regular, Mr. Carter, that's our regular.
I don't like that.
How are we gonna have these meetings after we've already adopted the rate on the 8th?
It's gonna be adopted with the tax rate before you decide on their budget.
I mean, is there another time that we can do it?
That's not helpful.
I mean, is there another time, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just talking about the timeframe, we're gonna be here every night.
So-
We're here every night.
Marshall, what's the week you're gonna be gone?
Week of the 8th.
Nine through the 14th.
Could we do something, I know we've got our retreat topics on the 4th, we've got the potential to do that Tuesday or Wednesday before the 4th, the second or third, if we wanted to do a joint meeting with the school board, have two meetings that week.
I'll make calendar work on my end.
I'll make it work.
Make it work. What time on the, well, I mean, the-
Second or third.
It was agreed upon on the 4th, what do y'all got on the, where's my calendar at?
Tuesday, April the 2nd.
What day of the week?
It would be the April 2nd or Wednesday, April 3rd, and I think Mike had some time constraints.
They couldn't do it on the 3rd.
I can do the 3rd.
Nick couldn't do the 3rd.
Yeah. Tuesday, April the 2nd.
Nick, how about you on the 2nd?
Yeah.
What time?
4th.
Is that spring break for the schools?
I'm not sure, but likely that's the week of Easter, I believe.
What time can you all be here on the 2nd? Mike, can you-
I'm free that whole day.
I can be here that afternoon, just start it, and I'll be here when I get here. Y'all get me up to speed, and I can pick my piece, and we'll move on.
Just wanna hang with our regular 3 o'clock time?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock?
It's fine.
April the 2nd, 3:00 PM, school.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, of course, we'll reach out, we're looking then to hold a joint school board meeting, a joint meeting with the school board, and I guess this is to hear from the school board regarding their budget, any questions, I guess, that our board members may have of the schools and the school staff.
Yes, sir.
Regarding their proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
We would look to hold that here in this-
Right here.
Down about 12 or 15.
We're down 12?
Huh?
It's 27:14, not 41 seconds.
All right, so, let's see, let's go through that calendar again.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, we would look then to hold our, we'll recess from this meeting until Thursday afternoon at 2 o'clock for the broadband authority meeting, followed by the budget work session with the Board of Supervisors at 2:30, where we will hear from Mr. David Rose with Davenport regarding the county's capital budget, and then Ms. Rosser with General Properties, our public safety staff, I think Ms. Dowdy is unavailable and won't be here Thursday, but I think I can likely cover that budget, or at least, we can speak to questions on the economic development, and then we would recess from there till Monday, April the 25th, at 5:00 PM, for further discussion on the FIRM housing proposal, to be followed by the proposed FY 24-25 budget public hearing. From there, I'm doing this with some, some memory here, and so, staff, y'all, y'all chime in here, from there, then, the possibility, of course, we've gotta reach out to the school board, a possibility of a joint meeting with the school board on Tuesday with a work session, April the 2nd at 3:00 PM, and then to be followed by another work session on Thursday, April 4th at 3:00 PM, regarding County Fair, Tourism, Parks and Recreation, Town of Rocky Mountain Fire Apparatus, and then, to be followed, then, by Monday, April the 8th, for the tax rate reassessment rate hearing, and then also the tax levies.
And that's at 6 o'clock on the 8th.
And that's at 6 o'clock, yes, Mr. Tatum, 6 o'clock on the 8th.
Adam, clerk, will you be so kind? You know where I'm going, don't you?
I do.
When all of this, tomorrow, or the next day, when we get this, will you be so kind as to send that to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. All right, now, we got one other thing, Mr. Jamison, on your-
We'll do this in no time, okay?
Everybody-
Yeah, we'll bring it up no time, and we'll scut it in, it's late.
Anything else, everybody clear, all right?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just go to house.
I'm gonna put the game on serious.
Thank y'all.